Board of Commissioners for Wednesday, March eighth, I'm sorry, March sixth at eight AM. And we start the meeting with invocation and pledge. This morning Commissioner LaPointe has invocation.
Dear God, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us make the best use of our own. We are of diverse opinion here, yet we wish to mend our differences and reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share a little of your wisdom with us to help us do the right by all concerned, and thank you for your heavenly blessing. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Jewett?
Here.
Hundley?
Yes, ma'am.
Koffea?
Here.
Klaus?
Here.
Henchel?
Here.
Next order of business is the approval of the minutes.
I'm aware, approve the minutes as presented.
Moved by Hundley, support by Klaus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Actually, question for, point of orders. Stupid on my part, sorry. If we wanted to talk about any of the items on the consent agenda, it's now, not later, right?
That would be, Consent Agenda is number six on your agenda?
Right. No, but I'm just saying, like, if we're approving the agenda, then those things are on the consent agenda and there's no pulling them off.
Okay, so, right now, we're at approval of minutes. These are the minutes from the February twentieth and February twenty-seventh meetings.
Okay, okay. Very, I'm, good.
He's trying to make our meetings go faster, maybe.
No, no, I just, no, I just jump ahead of you.
You're doing great, Bryce. You're doing great.
Sorry, all right, all right.
So, we're okay on your motion?
Yep.
Is to approve, okay.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Right, sorry.
Motion passes.
We're not into the approval of the agenda.
Okay, we are on item number four, first public comment. I will have the clerk read the rules, and just so you know, on the, later on the agenda, we will take public comment under item eleven B, assuming it's passed that way, which is the addition, additional changes to board rules. So, if you're here to speak about board rules, board rules updates, you may speak now, or you may speak during the meeting when we get to that item. Please read the rules.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized, and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Okay, step up, tell us your name and where you're from.
Bruce Moore, thirty-three sixty-three Summer Leaf Drive.
If you could point that mic towards you, we're actually televising, so.
Bruce Moore, thirty-three sixty-three Summer Leaf Drive in East Bay Township, in Commissioner LaPointe's district. My first public comment is, I object to the inclusion of item A two in the consent agenda. It's page eighteen in your packet. The minutes for the Health and Human Services meeting should have an twenty-minute public comment by Commissioner LaPointe with very little detail on what was actually said, and I would like to understand a little bit more about what was said in that twenty minutes. I am sure that Commissioner LaPointe can describe his liaison role in less than a minute, and I'd want, like to know more about the other twenty minutes in that, that item. Separately, I am opposed to the changes in the, the Commission rules, and in particular, the changes in the way in which the agenda is developed. I think that that takes significant power away from the county executive and makes what is already an exceptionally difficult job more difficult by making it harder for the county executive to surface difficult topics and topics that nobody wants to deal with. And separately, although I am certain that everyone wants to have more streamlined meetings, I think the changes under item six point three point two point two are actually going to have the opposite effect and make meetings longer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Gretchen Iorio. I live at five-twenty North Elmwood. I would like to address a few issues. Number one, please change the eight AM meeting time to an accessible time to allow more working people to attend and participate. Number two, I want to thank Commissioner Hundley for putting me in the rotation, for giving an invocation. I did not receive a response from any other Commissioner. I continue to object to an invocation because it is divisive. More and more people have voiced their objection to an invocation. There is still no criteria or process of how a Commissioner designates a person to give an invocation. A majority of Commissioners have stated they will not respond to a request from a citizen, nor will they indicate the basis for denying a citizen's request. Regardless, I accept Commissioner Hundley's designation for me to give an invocation despite the flawed process and unnecessary need for holding an invocation. Number three, there are revised board rules on the agenda. The revised rules limit or deny public participation at Commission meetings by giving the chairman the authority to decide if public comment is relevant and germane to county business. This revised rule precludes people from exercising their voice and therefore denies the right of a citizen to address the body. The revised rule is designed to shut down private, public, excuse me, public participation. Another proposed revised rule change will give the chairman control over what items will be on the agenda. Only a majority vote of Commissioners can override the chair's decision. The result will be the elected Commissioners will be prevented from bringing forward important issues for Commission discussion. The proposed revised rules are unreasonable and shut down the democratic process. These rules, coupled with the eight AM start time, an invocation policy without guidelines rejected by the public, leads one to believe that the majority of the Commission wishes to handle county business without the public's input. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead and wrangle that thing.
Carol Chakra, eighteen sixty-three Caspian. And I'll bet you wish the invocation topic would go away, and there's a very easy way to do that. Just make it go away.
Let me.
And before I say that, go forward with that. Here we are, we look pretty much like a meeting over at the senior center. It's the young, strong, and those who are still in the prime of working full-time, who are pretty much daytime workers, they're the ones not here. And they're the ones who can help us all soar like eagles. They are, they are creative and, and a lot stronger than I am, for sure. So, eight o'clock is not working so well for them. As Commissioners, you have items that impact the well-being of the county citizens and our precious resources. And to my understanding, the invocation topic was not on the agenda when it came up, and it was voted on instantly, and that's, that's pretty much troubling. That mode of operation disallows consideration of public input. And it also makes front-page news, over and again, over and again, over and again. And I'll bet you guys wish that, the Commissioners and all of us, us guys, wish that, that we get to the county business, and that invocation is wonderful when it's in the right place, that mixing it with county government flies in the face of separation of church and state. I did, as the policy for invocation says, the number six, I did write to my Commissioner, and I gave a request to give an invocation. So far and to date, I've heard nothing. However, what we all know is that our moms, everyone in here, taught us better. Do you really think it's okay not to respond in any way? Pretty much, our moms taught us it's impolite, it's downright rude. So, we'll see. It also smacks in the face of being potentially illegal. You're already aware that in North Carolina, a county is paying, had to pay up to well over $200,000 regarding an issue that's so similar to what's building up here. Shutting down the public and not telling us why.
Your time is up, ma'am, thank you very much. Your time is up.
Oh, my time is up, okay.
Thank you so much.
No, that's okay. That's fine. That's fine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kate Keating. I live at sixteen fifty-nine Wayne Street in Traverse City, Michigan. And I just want to go on record as supporting everything that Gretchen Iorio said, and also Carol Chakra. And I just wanted to speak briefly to the new rules that let the chairman decide what goes on the agenda, and whether or not people can comment. It sounds like a dictatorship to me, not like a Commission that's accountable to all of the people. And I'm asking you not to do that. And then, the last time, there was this talk about whether or not you would respond to people, and that your law, legal counsel there said, "You don't have to respond to people by the law," and also said, "People don't have to understand what you're doing." Are you kidding me? That is a bad law. You shouldn't be following it, and you should get rid of it. That's a horrible way to treat people. You, you guys are better than that. So, anyway, that's what I wanted to say, and thanks for listening.
Thanks, Kate. Good morning.
Good morning. Dave Petrov, Interlaken. These are some notes from the rise and fall of the Third Reich. The Constitution of the Weimar Republic, passed in July thirty-first, nineteen ninety, was on paper the most liberal and democratic document of its kind the twentieth century had seen. Mechanically well-nigh perfect, full of ingenious and admirable devices which seemed to guarantee the working of an almost flawless democracy. The wording of the Weimar Constitution was sweet and elegant to the ear of any democratically-minded man. The people were declared sovereign. Political power emanates from the people. Men and women were given the vote at age of twenty. All Germans are equal before the law. All inhabitants of the Reich enjoy complete liberty of belief and conscience. No man in the world would be more free than a German, no government more democratic and liberal than his. There were flaws, to be sure, and in the end, some of them proved to be disastrous. The Constitution conferred upon the President dictatorial powers during an emergency. The use made of this clause by chancellors under President Hindenburg enabled them to govern without approval of the Reichsthat, and thus, even before the advent of Hitler, brought an end to democratic parliamentary government in Germany. Also of note, the Democratic Republic, for its survival, did bear a responsibility to stop the inflation that could have been halted by merely balancing the budget, a difficult but not impossible feat. Adequate taxation might have achieved this, but the new government did not dare to tax adequately. Instead of drastically raising taxes on those who could pay, the Republican government actually reduced them in nineteen twenty-one. From then on, goaded by the big industrialists and landlords, who stood to gain through, though the masses of the people were financially ruined, the government deliberately let the mark tumble in order to free the state of its public debts. Moreover, the destruction of the currency enabled Germany, enabled the German heavy industry to wipe out its indebtedness by refunding its obligations in worthless marks. The General Staff, disguised as the Office of Troops to evade the peace treaty which supposedly had outlawed it, took notice that the fall of the mark wiped out the war debts that left Germany financially unencumbered for a new war. The masses of the people, however, did not realize how much the industrial tycoons, the army, and the state were benefiting from the ruin of the currency. All they knew was that, as individuals, they were bankrupt. In their misery and hopelessness, they made the Republic the scapegoat for all that had happened. Such times were heaven-sent for Adolf Hitler. Those who do not remember the past are condemned to relive it, so.
Thank you, Dave.
Ann Rogers, twelve thirty-six Peninsula Drive, and a taxpayer of both the county and the city. Trust and transparency, they're lacking in government all the way from Washington down to the local level. An example of it here started on the very first meeting, when you passed the eight AM time without letting the public know that they had a chance to weigh in on it. Lack of trust can be the downfall of everyone. It puts people at odds with each other, it destroys community. And the lack of trust that we have in what you're trying to do with the rules has been talked about by all those that spoke before me, I won't reiterate. It also shows a lack of trust in your employees that have been here, many of them for many, many years, and have a background and a historic perspective that can't be duplicated. Representation versus authoritarianism. You're supposed to represent us, not lord it over us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is TJ Andrews. I live at six one nine Webster Street. I submitted comments, I distributed them. Basically, I have, I have more than three minutes' worth of comments, so I took the time to write a letter to you, which I distributed last evening. But given the length of the letter and the lateness at which I submitted it, I brought copies to distribute this morning, and I just want to summarize my concerns related to the rule changes. I apologize, recognizing the concern that this is on the agenda for later. I'm here between getting my kids off to school and heading to work, so I'm in the unfortunate position of having to comment and run, so to speak. So, when you get to the, to the board rules, my concerns are that, my understanding of the way county boards, in general, and this county in, in particular, is supposed to work under the law, is that the board acts collectively. All Commissioners have equal authority to act on the, and bring business before the county. And, and the power of one is, is, there is no power of one. The power of the chair is limited by statute. Instead, the board acts collectively, not individually. Two elements of the proposed rules would change that. One element is that the agenda would be subject to approval of the chair. Not only does that seem to be contrary to the provision that the board acts as a whole, but it also creates an awkward position where, for example, a department needs an expenditure, and for whatever reason, there are no standards guiding the chair's approval or disapproval of an agenda item. The chair decides that that should not go on the agenda, and then that leaves your department in an awkward position of trying to find another Commissioner, arguably, to get that on the agenda through the, the voting process. Or it just gets left off the agenda, and basically, the chair has then exercised a, a power of one to, to make a decision on that, on that particular item. We trust that that won't happen, but the rules shouldn't be written to allow that to happen. The second way that the, that the rules would take power away from the board and into the chair is through the public comment, deciding what's relevant and germane to public, for public comment. And anytime there's an attempt to shut down public comment, that leaves us in a gray area where we're on the verge of Open Meetings Act violations. When that, when that discretion is exercised by the board, it's a safer bet. When it's exercised by one person alone, that leads to an increased opportunity, not unlike what Commissioner Lem Kulfan himself in a few years ago, when he shut down public comment and was sued accordingly. So, at, at least if there are decisions to be made like that, they should be made by the board as a whole. I'd like to point out what appears to be a typo. Two-thirds, one-third is two members.
Time is up, thank you very much.
So, thank you. I hope you change the rule, the meeting time as well. Have a good day.
You too. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none. Move on to approve of the agenda. This is item five. Give the Commissioners a moment. I'll move to, the agenda as provided. Okay, with a motion by Klaus to approve as provided. We have a second.
Second.
Second by LaPointe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we have our agenda. Consent calendar, please read the rules.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file, or approval, is approved by a single Commission action adopting the consent calendar. A, receive. Number one, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Minutes of January seventeenth, twenty nineteen. Number two, Department of Health and Human Services Minutes of January twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, Pavilions. B, approvals. Number one, twenty nineteen caller licenses. Number two, scrap tire grant. Number three, federal award grant policy. Number four, fiscal year twenty nineteen budget amendments. Number five, medical services contract for jail inmates. Number six, NG nine-one-one call handling system agreements.
Okay. Is there anything on the consent calendar that Commissioners wish to remove? None? I'll ask, oh, yeah?
Actually, yes. So, A, two, although I believe perhaps someone from our, from the audience already asked for that one to be pulled, the DHHS minutes.
I was actually just about to ask if they wanted that removed.
Yeah, okay. So, I would as well. And then, B, five, the medical services contract for jail inmates, also.
And I would just, I don't.
Go ahead, Bryce.
I am now an employee of Child and Family Services, and I don't think it impacts my ability to vote on receiving minutes, but I just, I do always want to call it out when CMH comes up, because it's a, a large contract that they have. So, and DHHS will be an issue too, when it comes to foster care and anything like that, but.
Okay. All right. Members of the public, is there anything you'd like removed from the consent calendar? Anything else? Dave?
Yeah, item B two, scrap tire grant.
All right, B two. Okay. So, we have a consent calendar with the exceptions of item A two, B two, and B five. Miss anything?
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Wheelock, seconded by Koffea, to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now, on item seven of the agenda, special orders of business.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Cherry Capital Airport is here today. I don't see Kevin, but I do see Mr. Baldwin and Carrie. I'm sorry, sir, I don't know your name. But if you could introduce yourselves, and we have a presentation to you, specific to the Cherry Capital request for appointments to a special.
Kevin, our airport director, is out of town on.
Oh, is he? All right.
On airport business.
I may look like Kevin, but, I talked to Kevin last night, or yesterday, on the phone, and guess I missed that.
I don't know exactly how this works. We're on page seventy-sixty-five in your packets.
Sorry about that.
Our laptop was borrowed.
There, Sarah.
Last night, so we have to use a new one.
Let's see about that. Oh, in case anybody's wondering, the password is password.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for having us today. First, before I begin, I'll introduce myself. I'm Stephen Baldwin, from Stephen Baldwin Associates. Today, it was intended to have your airport director, Kevin Klein, with us, and actually to kick this off. And in addition to Kevin, is the, the board chair at the Northwestern Regional Airport Commission, Doug DeYoung, right? So, Doug also got called out of business for his company, and it was unavoidable. So, we're out here solo today to give you this presentation, talk to you a little bit about what's going on at the airport. With us today is Carrie Zeitz, the board attorney for the Commission, and Spencer Gillette, from my staff. So, I'll try to keep this brief. I want to leave a little time for your questions at the end, but primarily, we're here today to ask that this board appoint a couple of members. We'd ideally like three members to be appointed to join us in discussion, to talk about the governance model at the airport as it exists today, and to see if it's appropriate for any changes to be made to that in the future. This stems from an ongoing strategic airport, strategic and business plan that we're conducting for the airport. And as we went through that process, and got to traditionally the governance section of it, and reviewed your model as it exists, believe that it's time to revisit that. Our discussion with your Commission, however, was, was reaffirmed in terms of your Commission passing a resolution specifically asking that we visit the model and examine the feasibility of any changes that could occur to that. They did specifically mention an airport authority, although we mentioned during that meeting, and we continue to mention, there's more than one option here as you go forward. So, I want to talk to you a little bit about that, but the, in the end, I'm going to ask if we can get some appointments from this board to join us in the dialogue.
You're going to let me run this, huh?
I am.
Okay.
You weren't a clicker.
I've got it. No, I've got it. Thank you, though.
I'm a little clicker.
So, we'll talk a little bit about the governance review process, the history of governance at Traverse City, Cherry Capital Airport, trends in the industry, and next steps in our planning process that's ongoing at the airport. And as I mentioned, we're specifically asking for some members of this board to be appointed to join us in dialogue. We recently presented up in Lelandale County, and Lelandale County has appointed three members to join us in this dialogue. So, as an airport that's sponsored by both counties, it's important both counties participate with us. The purpose of the committee is to discuss the ongoing research regarding airport governance models. Currently, your Commission, your Commission was formed, I believe, in seventies, early seventies, after the airport went back and forth between Traverse City, the military, and then back to Traverse City again. And then, the counties dialogued about forming an authority and ended up with a Commission, and I think in ninety-five revisited the concept of an authority. So, it's not unusual for airports to actually go through this dialogue on a periodic basis. And I'll talk a little bit about trends in the industry, because we're clearly seeing trends in the industry, where people are changing their governance model so that the airport can be most responsive to its customers and its needs as it goes forward. But the purpose of the committee is to help us. But the purpose of the committee is to help us represent yourselves in that discussion, to examine the different governance models that are out there, to make specific recommendations, and if there is, if there are changes to occur, to help us develop the documents that are necessary to implement those changes. How do we do this? Well, pretty traditional. We establish a committee. The commission will actually invoke that committee at its March meeting. The first committee meeting would therefore be in April. There are clear goals that are stated for committee members to participate, and we conduct a series of structured dialogue and structured meeting with a specific timeframe to bring this conversation to the table. And if there are recommendations that come out of that conversation, then to go forward and ask that committee to help us develop the enacting documentation. Any actions that come out of this committee are subject to the approval of this board and Lelandale County Board. So, the committee is advisory only, has no formal action or power, if you will. It's there to have a dialogue with us and help us understand your counties' well. As I mentioned, there's a little bit of a history to Traverse City, Cherry Capital Airport, 1935, Traverse City opened the airport, and '42 transferred to the military, which is very interesting, because during that timeframe in our history, the military was building airfields all over this country. And most of the airports in this country were inherited by the military, or I mean, by the communities from the military in the War Surplus Act. And then, since that time, the airports have grown, their governance models have changed, and they've become businesses of their own, in their own right. But it all started back in that timeframe. After the war was over, the military deeded the airport back to Traverse City, and then in '71, the Northwestern Regional Airport Commission was devised, and the airport was run by the two county sponsors in that format. '95, Lelandale County inquired about alternate governance, alternate governance models.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yes, I guess.
You skipped the 1990 part, which is, I represent, I live in the city and I represent half of the city. That one's the particularly peculiar one to me, because I got here in '93. What's the history of why Traverse City said, "It's in our boundaries, but we don't want to deal with it"?
Kerry knows more about that.
Maybe I'm even misrepresenting that, but that's...
Local history than I do.
In the late eighties, the city, the Airport Commission was originally formed back in the early seventies by the city and the two counties. And in the late eighties, the city determined that it wanted to get out of the airport business, and the city and the two counties met, and it was determined that the two counties would become the two governmental entities that would be the political subdivisions that got together to form the Airport Commission. So, that's what happened in the late eighties, and then in the early nineties is when that transfer happened, because the city just wanted to get out of the airport business.
Okay, thank you.
And then, since '95 through the current time, your commission really has been acting as an authority without being fully empowered as an authority. It's taking a lot of actions on its own that would be traditional for an authority, but it doesn't have the formal standing of an authority. So, we'll talk about that a little bit. There's no decisions have been made on this. We approached Nate, and the administrator up in Lelandale County, with a preliminary meeting that grew out of the commission's request to examine this issue and said, "We want to have a dialogue about it." So, that's where we're at. There's a number of alternatives here, one of which is do nothing, and that could be what comes out of that dialogue. Another is to look at the commission and where it has weaknesses, if you will, in structure, and to seek to ameliorate those. A third is to do the authority, and then a fourth would be, if none of those models were for you, to seek a specific tailored model that's in your airport's interest, but it would require state legislation to get that accomplished. Our firm was involved with other Michigan airport transfers into an authority, and we were involved with the creation of the current Act 95 at the state level that allows your community to establish an airport authority without going back to the legislature. So, we're pretty familiar with that. There are several different models of airport governance out there today. There's city, county, state, there's airport authorities, there's multimodal airport authorities that operate in addition to the airport, roads, bridges, bus systems, et cetera. And then, there's a very small sector of private airport manager, management that's operated through private contractors. In fact, it's 1% of the airports in the country. That model really has not taken hold yet in the United States. If I could just go back, maybe. So, if you look at this slide, it's a little small to see, but you can kind of, and there will be a test for all these three-letter airport codes over here to the right. Clearly, the trend has been for airports to move into the authority structure, and there's some very valid reasons for that. And the ones that are moving into those authority structures are the city and county airports as they exist today. And we'll talk about that a little bit. But presently, about 12% of the airports in the country remain as a county, direct county-operated entity. We're seeing in the last 20 years about 20 or 25 airports in that sector moving into the airport authority model. We're not seeing any airports moving back, in case that's a question. I can't really think of any that have gone from an authority back to a straight governmental role. We have one airport or two airport examples, I think, that have gone from an authority to a commission, or a commission to an authority and back, but we have not seen any roll back to a governmental entity, straight out. Within Michigan, these are your primary commercial service airports in the state of Michigan, the larger majority and the larger airport size are authorities. It comes down to Cherry Capital, Lansing, right beneath Cherry Capital is an authority. The other two airports, Kalamazoo and Saginaw, are pretty small in terms of their employment. Cherry Capital is an outlier, if you will, as the authorities are, all the larger airports are predominantly now run by authorities. Some of the next steps. We're looking for your appointment, so we have a discussion on this topic, get into the details on it. As I mentioned, we're looking for those appointments to be made prior to March, the end of March, with the first meeting in April, and we would begin a meeting process that would involve representatives from both Lelandale and Grand Traverse County governments. Along with our team, we'll be hosting those meetings and organizing them and conducting them, and the airport staff. And that's it. I'm going to take questions, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Several questions. And first, I'll admit, I know very little, other than utilizing the airport, I know very little about the structure of it. I know that we have somebody on the board that's liaison with the committee, but talk about the commission, the N R A C, National Regional Airport Commission. They're not elected, I assume. Does this, how are they put into office?
They're appointed by this board and Lelandale County Board.
Well, there's, it's a seven-member commission. Five of them are appointed by your board. One of them is the chair of your board, and then the other four are appointed directly by your board, and then two of them are appointed by Lelandale County.
Okay. A question on, what was in the press, you had mentioned earlier on, there's lots of options, do nothing, slight modifications, the authority. When this first came out in the paper, and it was pretty much, it seems like the emphasis behind this is to consider creating an authority. To go through the legal process, is there an estimate that has been put together on what the cost, legal cost, et cetera, et cetera, consulting costs would be to take it from its current existence, formation to an authority?
So, the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, has to approve a change in governance model, in essence. And actually, one of the reasons that this has sort of hit our radar is because the current model is not clear to the FAA. If you look at the FAA certification documents at the airport, some of those documents are issued to the charities as the airport sponsor, and some of those documents are issued to the commission as the airport sponsor. So, there's some confusion in there about who actually has the control over the airport in terms of the FAA certification process. We've done a number of these transfers. In fact, I believe our firm has done more of these transfers than any other firm in the country. So, we're very familiar with the process. We have an excellent relationship with the FAA. The process is to develop the changes you want in your model. If it is an authority, then it will be an authority. It would probably be under Act 95, though I don't want to say that's a given. There's an application process with the FAA to make that change occur, and that's it. The process is very structured, it's very deliberate, it takes some time. There's not, the legal aspect of that is the board attorney working with the county attorneys to create some of the governing documents under our advice. That's really what that process entails. It's not an expensive process. It's not, it's probably, it could be a six-month to 12-month process. Your particular environment here is not that complex as airports go. It's not like we're moving, you know, the old metro into a new model, right? It's Traverse City. So, we don't, we're not expecting it to be a long process, nor an expensive one.
Okay. And last question, at this point. At this point, the residents of property owners in Lelandale and Grand Traverse County have, in an indirect way, since they elect the board, and as you now know, the board elects or appoints the committee, there's some control by the residents of the community of what goes on at the airport, although very indirect. If an authority is created, is, do any elected officials have, by appointments or any other way, have any role in what the airport does, chooses to do?
So, this is the dialogue we want to bring to the table and begin to discuss. But traditionally, the sponsors, as they exist, Lelandale County and Grand Traverse County, would continue to make appointments to the authority board. The difference here is that the authority would be, the authority itself, as opposed to the commission, would be properly structured and properly empowered to run your airport, and to run a little better, more efficiently and effectively, be more responsive to the airlines and businesses, to clean up some areas of confusion with the FAA certification, and those types of things. So, I don't believe you would lose any control in terms of the appointments process into the authority. It may be broadened a little bit, because you, under Act 95, there's a requirement that one member of the authority be from outside the immediate region of the airport. That's how they define it as now a regional airport. But no, I don't think you'd lose any control. The appointments would still be made by this county and Lelandale County, however that gets worked out. It may not be the same numbers that you have, which are, what, five and three?
Five and two.
That may shift, but that comes out of the dialogue, so...
Thank you.
Oh, I was just going to add that Mr. Baldwin managed the transition of the Grand Rapids Airport from the...
County.
County.
Kent County.
Kent County to the airport authority, and Kent County still appoints all of the members of the airport authority in that case.
Kent County actually did something interesting in their, in their transaction. They developed new articles of incorporation, new bylaws, new governing documents. They empowered their authority to properly. But they decided to keep all of the existing appointments, all of the existing members under their former advisory committee, they had an airport advisory committee. They kept them, and they just, they moved them into their new role as the authority. So, they didn't even do a change of personnel, really, you know? So, it's kind of interesting. And it was a good, smooth process, so.
A couple of things about our airport, I guess. One, this community is very fortunate. We have a very vibrant airport. You know, we heard from Kevin's report, annual report, that we had over half a million people through that airport last year. Very exciting for the community. The cooperation between Lelandale and Grand Traverse County has been good. That's why we have what we have. The, one of the things, we talk about whether the community has authority, or has control. We also, by that model, also have some liability. And if the authority is created, that liability transfers from us to them. So, you know, there's, there's something to be said for that, too. I think we're very fortunate, you know, we can look around the state, look around the country. There's very few communities our size that actually have an airport that pays for itself, that neither Grand Traverse County nor Lelandale County has to subsidize it. On another board that I sat on, the Economic Development Corporation, we deemed that the airport is vital to the continued economic development of this community. I think anything that we can do to help the airport grow and to streamline their operation is a good thing. You know, this discussion has happened on and off for a number of years that I've sat in this chair. But the fact is, is that pretty much, Grand Traverse and Lelandale County historically have done a hands-off thing. They've allowed the Airport Commission to operate anyway. You know, whether, whether it was called an authority or whether it was a commission, they have operated pretty much independently, and very successfully so. So, you know, I certainly would be supportive of the, of the concept of creating the authority. I think it helps to streamline some of the things that they've tried to do. I know when there was the discussion about selling property to the Costco, it became a very long and drug-out process, back and forth from one board to the next board, to back and forth, and the dialogue became a little muddy, if you will, at the best. So, I think there's a lot of benefit to whether it's, you know, I, we probably, there's no reason to create a new will. The Act 95 model of the authority is good. We've talked about it before. I don't see any reason that wouldn't be a good thing for us. But the key piece to the discussion is the fact of how well this airport has served our community, and that by creating the authority in place of the commission, which is supposedly controlled by the two counties who truly have minimal amount of activity with it, to streamline their operation to the authority makes sense. And almost as importantly, it eliminates all liability coming back to Grand Traverse County.
Who else have a comment?
I would like to get to your estimate of what the downsides are, but before, because I'm sure there are some, and we're basically only hearing the reasons to move to an authority, which makes it feel like we really, 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 I don't, I don't want to feel like I'm being sold and I feel like it's important, right? So, so, but, but, so the things that I understand from what you, the earlier, from the packet is, it gives the authority the right to buy and sell property, and it gives the authority the right to take out bonds.
It may or may not.
Okay.
That's part of the dialogue.
Okay.
Will you extend that empowerment to the authority, or will you withhold that?
Okay.
It's not, it's not a fait accompli. There's a dialogue here, and there's a very structured, informed decision-making process to set it up. to set it up in its proper form. So, it doesn't have to be one way or another.
And that's why we want to form the committee, is because we want to have all of this dialogue about the pros and the cons of each different model, or each of those four options that are out there, with the committee, and kind of vet all of that, all of those items. We're not really, we're not here to sell the authority. We're here to ask for the formation of a committee, so we can consider that as one of the options. We've identified it as a good option for several reasons, but we need the committee to have that discussion to see, to really vet that issue out.
And Commissioner, to try to answer your question, so that you don't feel like you're sold.
Sure.
I did make a few notes anticipating.
Uh huh. Thank you.
You mentioned the ability to acquire and dispose of property. Your commission is not currently empowered to do that. Your commission is not currently empowered to apply for or receive federal grants independently. It has to come back through these boards. Now, whether it's been practicing or that, I don't, I don't really know.
Well, with, on the buying, selling, once they're empowered to buy and sell, and they're a governmental entity unto themselves, do they then have the right to foreclose the eminent domain and buy it that way, or?
Again, it will depend on how the sponsors decide to stand this authority up, and what powers you will extend to it. So, that's a discussion to follow. You're not in sync with some of the FAA procurement guidelines. We want to get that synchronized. There's these areas with regard to the language the FAA uses in issuing its certification documents that are mixed between the commission and the counties. We want to get that cleared up. There's a process the FAA uses to issue the official map of the airport, and that, that needs to be cleaned up as well, which will occur through this change. The advantage is, Commissioner, we're right on the mark in terms of your shedding liability. You know, this, the counties can be sued for activities that occur at the airport or by the commission. We would set presumably a future structure up to protect the counties from that event. So lawsuits, you currently have a couple extra layers of approvals running back and forth between two separate county boards, for example, to get grants from the government and things like that. And then, regional input, it broadens your regional input into the day-to-day policy oversight of the airport. So, to bring in additional input in terms of economic development or leveraging the airport to spin off additional economic impact into the communities, or promote tourism, is a benefit that may come from this, so.
All right.
So, you just gave us more pros, right?
Well, I don't, at present, and not going through the dialogue yet, I'm not really seeing a downside.
Okay.
I can't really speak to that yet, but I'm not seeing one.
So, okay.
We've got some experience in it.
Question?
I had some, a couple of things. So, for example, the Costco, I know that it came back, and as Sunny mentioned, it took some time, and we had to sign off on that, but, and I'm not making a commitment one way or the other whether that should change, but I wonder, I mean, that happens to butt right up against the edge of my district, and I think it's your district, right, Mr. Henshaw?
Actually, it's Commissioner La Pointe.
Or is it Mr. La Pointe? East Bay is split between the two of you. At any rate, I guess I want to really be thoughtful about whether this full body wants to be able to essentially give over our ability to have input on such a major development as Costco, or something of that scope, by giving it to, so we appoint some people, and it's not a one-to-one comparison, but sort of like the road commission. We appoint people to the road commission, but then, we don't necessarily get much to say about the decisions they make. For example, you know, I have many residents on Old Mission, which is, I know, in my district. The road commission was taking down many, many mature trees along a really scenic route, and folks were packing road commission meetings, talking about that. But ultimately, there's six-year appointments that we make, and then we don't really have much to say about the decision that the road commission makes. So, I'm just, I just think those are the kinds of things we really need to think through carefully before we cede maybe some level of authority over things that will affect the quality of life for our residents. So, just more of a thought in general in terms of a possible con that I haven't heard come up yet.
And those, those kind of cons and those issues are exactly what the committee is designed to, you know, form to do, is bring up those issues that you want to retain some oversight over. It all can be structured the way that we all agree is appropriate for each entity.
Right. But I, again, I just brought it up because I feel like we are both mostly just talking about the potential pros, and I do think it's important in the outset to consider some potential cons.
Commissioner La Pointe.
I agree with Betsy's comments on that. I think we want to make sure we fully understand how this does work, and there may be things we can improve, like you said initially, about just changing the existing rules in which the operate under, that gives maybe us more chance to address some of those issues versus, because it is, in my, you know, it's kind of a group that sits over there, and I displayed my ignorance of that by asking who appoints the committee. I mean, it's just, it's, it's one of those appointments that must fly under the radar because it certainly doesn't get to play that some of the other appointments get. They're just names come up and they get put on that. And I agree that they've done a great job. And maybe I set the tone incorrect. My first question was about the authority, and I'll go back to your original comment. There's many different options, from do nothing, to improvements to the existing charter, if you would, to an authority, and I clearly would understand what we're signing up for going to authority, because in all probability, once you go there, you don't come back. And authorities, my only other comment, I throw this in, is I know Metro Airport is an authority, and this certainly isn't black marking all authorities, but as you know, they've had some significant issues. So, anyone who thinks that creating an authority addresses all the issues, so I'm, I certainly would be open to that discussion, but I'd want to know, in my mind, like I think some of the others have expressed, all the alternatives, and truly, well, I'd just like to know, fully understand all the alternatives before we take this, we take this leap.
Commissioner La Pointe, what we do during this facilitated discussion is always remind the participants that we're trying to do what is best for the airport. Recognizing your airport is so vital to your community, we want to make sure that this dialogue occurs, and the outcome of this dialogue is in the true interest of what's best for the airport, so.
And the county.
Okay. I, in researching this topic for today, I read the airport commission bylaws, and it states who appoints committees of the airport. So, just, it's kind of minutia, but when it gets down to it, our board cannot appoint people to their committees. The chair of the airport commission appoints to their committees, just like the chair of our commission appoints to our ad hoc committee. So, I talked to Airport Director Kevin Kline, and we talked about how this kind of moving parts would work. So, what I'm recommending is that our board form an ad hoc committee that will advise our board. Doug DeYoung will appoint members of that committee to his advisory committee for the airport. So, it will be a joint committee. So, we're looking for members of our board. I asked Commissioner La Pointe, he expressed interest in it, and I believe it was their recommendation that our administrator also sit on that committee.
It's really important, because there's, there's technical components to this of how the governments work themselves. And so, we really need to have representatives. We'd like Nate to come, but it could be Nate or his representative, but somebody who knows all the inner workings of the government.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Can I make one other comment? Our new airport, which is now getting, getting quite old, actually, we were, we talked about the federal grant process, it was very, very complicated. You know, we were, we were very fortunate in that Carl Levin was a huge supporter of creating this regional airport, and he was, he pushed and pushed and pushed, and the federal money came to Traverse City to build this regional airport. You know, one of the things you have to remember, I believe Traverse City Airport, Northwestern, Cherry Capital Airport, is the first post-9/11 airport opened in the country. You know, it was under construction when 9/11 happened, and all of a sudden, two-thirds of the way into construction, all the requirements for airport securities changed. You know, there is no way that this community could have supported paying for those, those changes. Carl Levin was able to bring us federal money to make that happen, you know, and I, you know, we, we tend to forget about the federal support that we've had to create the airport, but we would not have that airport without federal money, you know, particularly, like I said, the post-9/11 piece was just devastating to our whole budget, our whole plans of how that airport was going to happen. You know, no one, no one would have ever dreamed those changes and those requirements would be put upon us.
All right. So, does, last, last commission, before, before this board was here, and I watched some videos how they formed committees, and basically, the chair would just start appointing people. But if you read our bylaws, only our board can form committees, the chair cannot. The chair appoints the people with the approval of the board. So, I would entertain a motion to create an ad hoc committee that will advise this board on the, on the structure of the airport.
I would be happy to move that, I think that's fair.
Okay, so moved by Hundley.
Second.
Second by the point, to create an airport advisory committee of this board.
And how will it work for actually choosing the members of that ad hoc committee?
The chair appoints them.
Okay. And will you be...
I'll be appointing.
Polling who is interested and would like to participate, or how is that going to work?
I've actually talked to Gordy and talked to Mr. Alger. They're both interested. Being as the airport butts and affects his district, I thought that was a good choice, and he's kind of inquisitive.
He's not the only one.
Yeah.
A question on that, that impacts the community. It's part of, the airport's in Traverse City, but it butts up to East Bay, and so they have concerns on what goes, goes on at the airport. Also, the road commission is a player in all this, and, you know, that was a discussion with South Airport and all of that. If there's going to be some, they talked about some activity about the impact on the community, I think, is in one of your slides, you used the term the impact on the community. Well, the community is, and that particular area is parts of Traverse City, East Bay, and the road commission. And I would like to think that they'd be more engaged in the process versus all of a sudden being told after a decision's made, oh, by the way, here's what we're going to do, and you have to come up with a solution or build something in your plan. So, I don't, it's not customary to add people outside the board to an ad hoc committee, but I would throw it for consideration or discussion, asking the East Bay board if they would like to have one of their members be a part of this, and also ask the road commission if they would like to have one of their board members be a part of this, just to give us...
I like that idea.
Make sure we cover all the bases, because they know, the township boards know better what's going on in their area than we do, and the road commission, you know, the same. So, just, I just throw that out for discussion.
I would add to that, that the city, again, is right, that's, the east side of the city is my district, and it's right up against the edge. I'm interested in, in serving on the ad hoc committee, and also, I could certainly either engage the city in it indirectly, or, to your point, they're the local, the most local authority that's going to be affected, so either a city representative, or I can act as liaison.
Okay. Any comments on all that?
I know it's a big committee, but it's affecting a lot of, a lot of people.
I guess, to, so you understand how this function, our advisory committee at the county level may be bigger than what gets appointed to the airport's advisory committee.
Sure.
So, it would, I guess it would give us an outside input when we caucus together to deliberate towards a recommendation to the full board.
Yeah. We, at this stage, we usually don't engage such a large contingent. It's, there's nothing that says you can't. Well, I guess what I would say is, this is a beginning of a dialogue, but it's not the end of a dialogue. So, there is a process based on what recommendations might be made. Definitely will be back before this full board several times in this process. If the decision is to go forward, there will be several iterative resolutions that this board and Lelandaw County Board have to make as we go forward. There'll be a lot of opportunity to deliberate on that. And Act 95 also has a public hearing component to it, so you have full public hearings on your process, too. So, I just let you know that.
And I, I think it was, it's the airport's intent that the committee, our advisory committee, be made up of the counties and then the airport commission, and of course, we would invite the road commission and the city and East Bay Township to our meetings. There'll be public meetings open to the public, and, you know, the advise, when we meet the first time, that's something we can go through, is who do we want to invite to our committees, our committee meetings, when, kind of put together that timeline to make sure that everyone is involved in the process. It's just, once we get, you know, beyond the two, the two governmental entities and the commission, you know, we're already at nine members, it's getting a little, but we would invite them, you know, for specific meetings and periodically.
So, will all of the airport advisory committee meetings be open meetings?
Yes, of course. Yep. They will be posted and open to the public, and minutes will be taken, and public comment. That'll be our first order of business, actually. We'll put together the bylaws to, you know, figure out how are we going to move forward and, you know, address all of these concerns and make sure everyone's involved.
Okay. All right, so for now, I'll suggest we just keep it to the three members they're recommending, and I can reach out to some others and see how that might fit together down the road.
We can talk to our folks in our districts.
The three members are La Pointe, Alger, and you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, Bryce?
Yeah. I, I think that makes sense overall. I guess I just want to, I just want to say that I know that, or I, I think that the seven of us are, we're new to one another, right? And we're working through that working relationship, and so just, you as the chair obviously have these, the authority to do these. I'm just, just want to keep a, be in your bonnet or whatever, just that, as we go forward with these, just to keep the, keep the, the mind open as far as coming with the appointments already made, as opposed to coming to discuss, you know, who's interested in, from what Commissioner, the questions that Commissioner La Pointe has been asking, I think he and I share a lot of the same concerns, so I think he'll be a great, you know, appointee to it. I just, I just want us to just be considerate of that, is all, just going forward, okay?
Commissioners, if I may, I know that Kevin, if Kevin were here, he would say you could call him, anybody could call him at any time, and you, and I know he would say you could contact our firm at any time. So, we'll respond to any inquiry that this, any member of this commissioner, Lelandaw County, makes. We're also committed to coming back and giving you periodic updates. So, it's a very open and transparent process, even though somebody commented earlier about that, but...
Okay.
It doesn't occur in a vacuum, and realize at the end, the FAA, it has to be filed with the FAA, and the FAA's briefed all along the process as well, because when it reaches the end, they want to know if it was controversial or not, so, and we've never delivered one to the FAA that's been controversial. In fact, we strive, when we come to, back to our boards, we actually strive very hard to get unanimous resolutions. We don't, we don't like outliers in that, because then when we file, there's no controversy, your application goes through more quickly.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to create an ad hoc committee for the purpose of advising this board on the future of the airport's structure? Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a couple of public comments. Step right up, say your name, where you're from. Step right up, say your name, where you're from. And let's try to keep it to a minute this time because we're.
Minutes? My name is Judith Peltow. I live at twenty-one hundred Abbey Lane, Traverse City, but actually I'm a resident of East Bay Township. And I have some concerns about the fact that the townships when, I understand that at some point they will come in and I understand what it means to have a really large ad hoc committee, but I think it's really important that the township and the city not be late comers to the party. I think they need to have a voice from the very beginning and I have confidence in East Bay Township Board has people that are, um, most likely very interested to be part of that. So, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Hello again, Dave Petrov, Interlochen. Just a couple of quick thoughts on this. I mean, when we start this process, it'll probably end up happening, but, uh, for the airport to become an authority, it's almost like they want to be their own sovereign unit, okay? So, they'll be separate from us and we already suffer some things here. Uh, I mean, uh, there was the, uh, problem with Costco, but then they had, the airport decided to increase its runway and their plane sizes. So, because of that, they came out and mowed down all the trees in the neighborhoods around there. They're talking about they have to take down more trees because it's getting bigger and things like that. A simple thing like we can, you know, see, Sarah, uh, just builds a whole new auto thing, uh, on Garfield there, they have to have sidewalks in there. The airport doesn't have to have sidewalks in there. There should be sidewalks on both sides of the street and they're kind of like, well, maybe we'll let the city pay for it.
Thanks, Dave.
You know? That's not right.
We got your point. Okay. We have a motion on the floor to create this advisory ad hoc committee. Further discussion?
Yeah, so I, I appreciate and I'll respect the, the decision of the chair to who he's chosen to appoint, who we've chosen to appoint to the ad hoc. However, I do note that both, both of the commissioners are from East Bay Township and there is no city representation, even though it's, it's right up next to the city. So, um, can we make sure that the city representatives, I know you said everybody's going to be invited, but would, would the commissioners be, who are going to be on that make a, make a deliberate commitment to you're going to engage East Bay Township rather than having them as a formal, can you also commit to engaging the city directly? I just need to feel like I'm advocating properly for my constituents in the city of Traverse City.
I, we reform the ad hoc committee, I, I mentioned, um, it's, it's, it's separate from the advisory committee, that's a part of this, it's, it's a part of us. And my recommendation is we have somebody on that, which is kind of unusual, someone from the road commission, which I think we agree, and somebody from the East Bay, uh, Board. Now, certainly if, if Betsy wants feeling she has, uh, input from Traverse City, which kind of also shares in all this, to be in part of that ad hoc, but yeah, it's fine. I don't think we're trying to limit that.
But I, but, but there are only three members and the two commissioners who are currently up for appointment to this board represent East Bay, but not the city. I'm, I represent the city, Bryce represents the city. And so, East Bay Township will have the benefit of two commissioners on this ad hoc, which is great, but I'm just saying, I want to know that, I, I would like to advocate that the city have some sort of direct commitment to be engaged proactively, not simply like the general public, hey, here's our meeting time and place, show up if you want.
Do you want to have us, well, I guess my question is, I guess you could represent the city or when I said have someone from East Bay and have someone from the road commission, we could add, I don't think there's anything that says, you know, the size of an ad hoc, if we want to invite.
I would like either.
Somebody from the city, uh, commission, if they would like to participate to make that offer.
I tell you what, for today, just to get the ball rolling, I'm going to recommend we just do the three. I will personally reach out to a city commissioner and see if there's interest and a road commissioner and an East Bay trustee. If you'll, if you'll. We can always add people down the road, but I, I think, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time on this so far, let's just get the ball rolling.
But it's important, so it's worth taking the time.
It's a long process, it's not going to be cut and dry all day today. So.
So, I'd move that, maybe, sorry.
We already have a motion on the floor to create the committee.
Okay.
And I've stated who I will, uh, appoint, which is you, myself, and Administrator Alger.
Mr. Chair.
And may we call it the Airport Governance Committee instead of the Advisory Committee?
Well, our committee is advising our board.
Oh.
And this is just moving pieces and.
I didn't want to have.
I don't think that was the intent of what they're asking.
Terms get confused, but that's fine.
Yeah. Kevin and I talked at length about.
Okay.
How the, the, the structure of committees work. We, our board cannot appoint to the airport board's committee by the bylaws of the airport board. Only Doug DeYoung can make those appointments. So, he will appoint or, you know, we'll suggest that he appoint members of our advisory committee, so it's actually two committees.
Okay.
All right, are we clear as mud?
Clear as mud.
All right, let's take a vote and move on. All in favor of creating an advisory, uh, committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have our ad hoc.
Is this an okay time? We can take five minutes or?
Sorry?
Can we take five minutes or?
Yeah, let's take a five minute. We'll reconvene at about nine twenty-one.
Okay.
Come on, Pete.
One day you got three, one day you got five, one day you got four.
You need the gavel? I am.
Whack in the microphone.
Let's go, people.
All right, we're gonna call the meeting back to order, please. We are on agenda item seven, Special Orders of Business, item B, Department of Health and Human Services, universal caseload problem. Mr. Rizzo, page seventy-nine in your packets.
This, this item was requested to be placed on, so we do have some information, but I thought you were going to present something else as well, Mr. Rizzo, is that the case?
Uh, well, I was gonna, I would...
Just step to the microphone, introduce yourself and...
John Rizzo, resident, four-three-seven-one Deerfield Lane, also on the Department of Health and Human Services Board, appointed by this commission. I was going to get a letter that we are going to send to the representatives ready, and as I was drafting it, I thought that maybe a simpler resolution would be a better option for this commission, that I would request them to make a resolution in support of our efforts to make, fix the problems.
Okay, take it from the ground zero. What's, what's the issue and what's the problem?
Okay, so, universal caseload is a proposed system, it's been rolled out in the fifteen counties of northern Michigan, and the idea is that there'll be a central call center and task center, and that on any given day, one office would handle all of one type of issue. So, for example, on the first day of implementation, Traverse City was supposed to handle every phone call for the ten county region that we're in. And then other counties were supposed to handle applications or verifications, or the different parts of all the application processes. And so the idea is to move away from one caseworker with, again, our caseworkers have seven-hundred-plus cases before this change, into a, what they thought was a system that would provide better coverage by just giving tasks to whoever was available and solving some capacity questions. Right off the bat, that presents some, some challenges. The, the relationships our, our workers had with their clients was important. In your packet, there was a, an action plan by our new director, statewide director, Robert Gordon, saying that he, he thought the impact the personal relationship had was overstated, and I, I think that he's incorrect in that. Almost everybody I've talked to has been disappointed that they don't have their caseworker any, any longer that they can call. From a troubleshooting standpoint, not having a specific caseworker is also a nightmare. If, if you submit an application and there's a problem, I might be talking to somebody in Manistee that's never seen the case before, never seen the file, only has the information on a computer screen, and has no context to what the problem is. We don't know who we're gonna be talking to, and nobody has accountability for making a mistake or fixing that problem. So, again, there, there's some problems right off the bat with the system, and as a board, we had all seen rollouts of, of software systems before, and they're always rough, but this has been exceptionally bad. And I'm not even sure that it, it's a well-thought-out system. So, again, it, it, in, in a nutshell, it's moving from case management with an individual worker to dividing every case up into discrete tasks and having whoever's available handle those tasks.
For the, for the benefit of the public, could you explain the topic? We're talking about DHHS, we're talking about people on food stamps, I assume?
Food stamps, Medicaid healthcare, Medicaid long-term care. The most important and emergent that's been part of this problem is the state emergency assistance for heating. So, any childcare support, so Department of Health and Human Services has a pretty broad mandate to help all the most vulnerable people, vulnerable people of our community. So, any sort of public assistance is going to come through the Department of Health and Human Services. So, again, we've taken all those programs, this vast amount of programs and vast amount of money, and we're experimenting with it.
Okay, and what is it you're asking this board to do?
I would like to, the board to adopt a resolution supporting our board position that if, if the system is not corrected in the immediate future, to allow us to go back to the old system that, that worked reasonably well. That's, we're gonna be sending a letter to Lansing and to our representatives requesting that we go back to the old system, because it, it's just a matter of time until one of our residents is seriously hurt because of this system. They're not gonna get the heat they need, they're not going to get the food they need, they're not gonna get the medical care they need. And I think we're lucky that we haven't had any serious injuries to this, so as a board, we're extremely concerned about this. And so, we'd just like a resolution of support. It also comes from a place that I, in my individual capacity, had sent a request to our representatives and into Lansing in December, outlining the problems and asking for assistance and receiving absolutely no response. So, we're trying to decide how we can get the people in Lansing to take us seriously, and we thought the county commission might be able to help with that.
Isn't the DHHS at the state level an executive branch?
It is an executive branch.
Have you tried contacting the governor?
We have not tried contacting the new governor yet, so the, the transition has not helped things as well. The, our director did try contacting Nick Lyon when he was still in office, Director Nick Lyon, but he has his own issues, not only outgoing, but the criminal case against him about Flint and the, the new potential charges about the child welfare system. So, he, his office was not responsive at all when our director reached out to him. Robert Gordon, the new director, when the problem was brought to his attention, he did take immediate action. He came and visited some of the counties, he created an action plan. He's admitted responsibility that it's an unacceptable system. But we haven't seen much movement in correction yet. So, you'll see in your packet that there's been some movement, but we're still in this county over at a forty percent backlog on application processing. We're over forty percent on violating our standard of promptness for getting care to clients still, and we're, we're just not seeing the movement that they anticipate in that action plan.
Okay, questions for board members?
Yeah, just follow up on some of the comments. I asked John, John to appear. I'm on that board, and I've only gone to two meetings, so it was brand-new to me, but it was striking in the meeting when they started talking about this rollout of the system that was supposed to help everybody and, and they, and the issues they're having. And they're not minor issues. If you read the article in the Northern Express, I think it's a very good article that shows how it's impacting the people, as John said, are in the, you know, in dire straits for the most part. And what was, the first thing I, I mentioned when this came up, and they're talking about the backlog and all this problem's been going on, this has been a rollout, and I guess primarily in the northern part of the state. The southern part of the state is still running on the old system that still works. My meta-comment is, you know, since I've been in this business, I said, "Well, can you get back with them and just say, 'Hey, we wanna opt out of the new system until you straighten out, put us back into the old mix.'" And they can't even get a response. It's, it's, it's really a situation where they're up here, you have all these state workers in the region, and Lansing just isn't giving them, based upon the last meeting I attended, any response. What's an estimated timetable, and what is even the issue? You know, we don't want a technical issue, but they won't even tell you if it's a software issue in terms of bugs, or is it a stress issue on the system itself? And again, it's a, conceptually, it sounds good, it's where they tie the software system for taking case information into the phone system, and it should all work seamlessly. And I guess what's amazing is they should've known in the first rollout of the first area that they rolled it out that they're gonna have some problems, so... That's why I asked John to come in and present, and if we can get, give them some additional information at the county, saying, "Hey, we feel we're adversely affected by this, are, are the people most vulnerable, and that we need some answers in terms of a timetable. When will they have this addressed?" Or give us an option to go back to the old system.
Commissioner Kofia?
And so, thank you for coming, thank you, Commissioner Lapointe, for encouraging this to be brought before the full board. I've been working on this as a private citizen, I became aware of it in early January, I want, I wanna say, and have tried to help. I have a back, I was a, I was a social worker for Head Start, through our community action agency, and have some knowledge of what, what that means when you really don't just look at a spreadsheet, but you understand what it means to have a relationship with your clients and the difficulty that there can be for them to get a hold of a caseworker, to try to come, explain something over and over again, produce paperwork. Many of these are working people who have jobs, and the way this is currently set up, they have to call between nine and three, which is during a lot of their workday, so they can't even call into this new system. For a lot of them during their workday, many of them have what are called track phones, which a lot of us don't think about. We have unlimited minutes on our phones, but a track phone, often it's, it's limited minutes, it's maybe two-hundred minutes. So, if you get, you know, we all know what it feels like to get stuck on hold and then bounced, "Oh, no, you gotta talk to so-and-so and so-and-so." When that happens to them, that, they can literally run out of minutes and then not even be able to get hold of anyone. So, so there are some serious concerns. I agree, the Northern Express article, I think, lays it out well. And we're talking about working, you know, working poor folks and with their children, we're talking about elders who can't afford to fill their propane tank, and I think the minimum, you're supposed to be able to pay like three-hundred dollars or something, and that can be a hardship for folks. So, I, I echo what Mr. Rizzo said, it's, we're lucky that nothing really tragic has come out so far, but this is, this is urgent, and anything that this board can do to help loosen the logjam in Lansing and get them to take this as seriously as it needs to be taken with how cold this winter has been. I, I'm, I'm grateful that you brought it forward, I'm grateful to Commissioner Lapointe, and I'm in full support of us using whatever leverage we have to advocate for the people of Grand Travers County.
Can I, can I address some of that a little bit more? So, the average hold, based on my experience, is over an hour now. I called in the other day. It said my wait would be less than five minutes. At an hour and fifteen minutes, I just hung up. The chair of our board, Rael Safrini, tried to call in, couldn't even navigate the system. So, the, they're touting the phone system as being more responsive, but it, it's not. And this part of it is supposed to be fixed already. They're, they're talking about fixing our application processing. The phones are supposed to be fixed already, and still we have over-hour wait times for people. The other with the heating is our director had to be on the phones taking heating assistance calls recently. So, how bad it is to make sure people got their heat, our director, instead of managing our department, was taking calls and making sure people's propane tanks were filled. So, it is really terrible.
I think there's no question there's a problem here. Commissioner Wheelock?
Well, you know, I think, you know, there's, obviously, there's a problem here. I recently had the opportunity to try to work through part of that process with one of my employees, and it, it's, it's overwhelming to someone, you know, in, in his position, and like a lot of other people in our community, to try to navigate the system. He, you know, he simply had, didn't have a clue, you know, or how to begin, and I'm not sure that I could help him much with that process, you know. I, I did what I could, but, you know, obviously, there's a couple of questions that come out right off the bat. You know, we talk about forty percent backlogs now. What was the backlog like before the process?
It, it was down in the teens, so it was, they didn't have a...
It's important to note, you know, that we had a backlog before, before the change, and then with the winters being what it is, the backlog has gotten significantly worse. It probably would've gotten worse even under the old system, just simply because of conditions. I have no problem with this board going on record, you know, trying to figure out a way to do something better, you know. Obviously, for me, I would've, I would've liked to seen some sort of a draft resolution in this packet for us to act on. You know, we have, we have some supporting documentation. You know, the Northern Exposure article was good, or Northern Express article was good. I had read that, actually, a couple of weeks ago when it came out, I had read that. But, but, but the fact is, you know, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of doing this, I just, I'm not sure that we have enough information to draft a resolution here today for us to vote on.
Can we, can we direct staff to draw up, they've, they've heard what we're, we're talking about, and they've heard from John what would be beneficial. Can staff draw something up and pass it by John to see if it meets what he, he thinks that their DHHS board is requesting? And then, I mean, this has been going on for some time, so we wait for two weeks, we'll have it in our packet, and John doesn't need to attend.
I have no problem with that, but I, I think it is critical that we actually, you know, we've got some supporting documentation here, but someone smarter than me's gotta draft this resolution in order for it to have any effect on those people in Lansing, because they don't, they don't think the same way I do, I'm pretty confident of that.
To Gordy's point, we could make a motion to instruct staff to draft a resolution, specifying the points you want in that resolution, and then authorizing the chair to sign it on the board's behalf, and send it to specify the legislature and the governor, or whoever you think is appropriate.
If that was a motion, I would second that.
I'm comfortable with that, as, if we're kind of in collective agreement with Mr. Rizzo's request, which is to say, "It's not working, our, our community's being adversely affected, and we respectfully ask to be put back, just like this place is downstate, back to the old system." And if, and if we're comfortable with that as a group, I'm fine with letting staff draft with Mr. Rizzo and our chairman signing off on that, if that's the agreement that we're in.
I'm gonna agree with that.
Motion or second? I'll do either.
All right, so let's craft the motion now that you've made it. So, my understanding was, Mr. Rizzo's requesting, we petition them that either the, the system is functional within, we need a timeframe.
I don't think the system's gonna get better. I think, I think he's saying we would like to go back to the old system.
Just petition them to put us on the old system until the new one is functional.
Because it's not working for our county, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Is that...
That'll get their attention, not that they're necessarily, we can mandate that, but that will get their attention. And we see that, we view this as, as to the point of seriousness that we are requesting that they go back to the old system. Now, do I think that's gonna happen? No, but that's probably the biggest, that, that gives them the sense of the urgency of it.
And it's us representing the vulnerable people in our county in an official way, that attempts by the DHHS board have not met responsiveness so far, so...
Okay.
So, I move that we do that.
I just have a comment, and thanks for coming, John.
You're welcome.
This situation does have to do with the vulnerable people in our county, and I see nobody out in the audience stepping up and voicing any opinion or being appalled by it. But, back a couple of years ago when we had no, when animal control was an issue, you couldn't, you couldn't come up with enough chairs to fill. You know, there's more people to sit in seats than we had seats available, and that was for animals. This is for people. You know, it would be nice to see people come in support of people. So, that, that's just my, thanks for coming, John.
Thank you for that comment. And I'd like to apologize for the commissioners for not having a resolution drafted. I am changing, in the middle of changing careers, and last week was, my schedule's insane, and I'm willing to work with the county to draft something.
Staff?
I will reach out to Mr. Rizzo, set a meeting, get a better understanding of what he is requesting, and maybe get some supporting information from our staff and those users of the service, and prepare something for you.
Okay, and just get some clarity from the people forming the motion.
So, it was a move by Lapointe, seconded by Kofia, I think, is what it ended up being?
Right.
For staff, the motion, the motion was staff would draw up a resolution in line with our discussion, work with Mr. Rizzo on that, and if they're in agreement that we are authorizing the chair in our behalf to...
And send it proven.
To the legislature and to the governor's office, because it is, as you pointed out rightly, it's really her, her purview at this point.
Okay. Okay, are we clear?
And basically, as I understand it, that, that is to direct them that Grand Travers County wants to be put back on the old system.
Because the universal one is...
We're gonna talk about any other proposals other than put us back where we were, then I'd like to see the proposals that are being happening. But if all it is, is a direction requesting that we be put back on the old system, I can support this. If we're, if we're gonna talk about changes to, to whatever, then, then I'd like to see those changes before...
No, I think it's just simply a request, saying it's not working for our residents and put us back on the old system, please and thank you.
Formed a motion. Bonnie, can you tell us what you got down?
Oh, darn. Move by Lapointe, seconded by Kofia, to request staff to draft a resolution or letter indicating that they, they'd like to go back to the old system and how the new system is functional. Staff will work with Mr. Rizzo and the chair, and then the resolution slash letter will be sent to the legislature and the governor. Is that right?
Okay, comments?
Just want clarification from Mr. Rizzo. Is this a feasible option? Is it, is it possible to go back to the old system? Are we asking for something that is either against the law or not feasible?
It's not against the law, and I think it's possible from a system standpoint. Again, I, I think as Commissioner Lapointe said, it's probably not gonna happen, but I think feasibly. There's nothing illegal about going back to the old system, there's no law that mandates the system, and the system is using our, the same computer system, it's just assigning tasks differently. So, there, I don't think the technical aspects of going back would be impossible as well.
In addition, we have counties downstate that are still on the old system, so, so I don't think it's a legal piece at all.
Commissioner Hundley?
Just for a point of clarification, this caseload issue affects all DHHS, including child welfare, adoption, foster care kinds of issues, is that...
It does.
Okay, so, with that, because that's like half of the budget of Child and Family Services, I'm going to sit this one out.
Okay.
I guess the only question I have, do we have the ability to go back to the old system? Or, once the new software has been installed, can we, can we go back there? You know, I, I have, you know, I have that issues with my stuff. When I install new software, sometimes I can get where, back to where I was, but sometimes I can't. Do we have the ability by which if, if, if we were, if the governor were to say tomorrow, "You can go back to the old system," are we in a position to in fact do that?
Well, real quick, Gordy, great point, and a point well-taken, but I think this resolution will, at the very least, give them a little pressure.
Yes.
The public is becoming aware that there is an issue, and we care about our citizens, so, one way or the other, this needs to be corrected. Commissioner Lapointe?
If they wanted to, if they wanted to put the effort into it, and it would take an effort, they could certainly do it, 'cause the software still is in place now. I mean, so it's, we're not asking them for an impossibility, I can assure you.
It would be essentially, Commissioner Wheelock, it'd be essentially turning off one part of the system, not revamping the system. So, I, I think it's technically feasible.
Okay. You ready to vote? Okay, motion on the floor is to create the resolution, or instruct staff to draft a resolution, the chair to sign it, and staff to send it on to our legislature and our governor. Any further questions or comments? Let's vote, all, all, let's roll call vote, please.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Dewitt?
Yes.
Hundley?
Upstain.
Kofia?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Rizzo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are on, items removed from the consent agenda, item eight on your agenda sheet. First item that was removed, and taking them in, in the orders they appeared on the consent agenda, was A2, Department of Health and Human Services, minutes of January twenty-fifth, 2019. I believe we had a member of the public on that one. If you would step up and just give us a brief summary of your concern.
Bruce Moore, thirty-three sixty-three Summer Leaf Drive, East Bay Township. My concern on the DHHS minutes of January twenty-five, in the, in the minutes on page eighteen in your packet, on page three of the minutes, in the second session for public comment, Commissioner Lapointe made public comments in, with a summary that's, that's relatively vague, given that his comments ran to twenty minutes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
I guess I, you know, because we pulled this, I guess I'd like to hear from Gordy about what the comments were. Obviously, none of us were at the meeting, so... If he would just elaborate...
Let me read, let me read what they, I did. Well, what I did at the, at the meeting, representing the board, is first of all, I give their board an idea of what's going on within the, within the county. As my comments covered pension deficit or pension liability, a number of other topics, and just to give them a, an appraisal of what's going on. I talked about the jail. We had, at that time, we had, I think we had taken our tour, so I gave them an update on that. Okay, I guess the comment that I spent quite a bit of time on, and here it says, "Lapointe says that his goal is to make sure that taxpayer dollars are being spent appropriately." And probably the length on that was, I just wanted, even though it's, the pavilions is self-sustaining, based upon the revenue they, they take in, it was in fact funded by taxpayer dollars over a twenty-year, ten-year, twenty-year millage, I think. They raised something like forty million dollars, so it's a, it was paid for by the taxpayers, and as a member of the pavilions board, I wanted, one of the things I've been a focus on is ensuring that our tax, our taxpayer dollars are being spent as efficiently and as effectively as, as possible. And that would be my main, one of my main objectives in my role over the next year or so as a member of the pavilions board, is just understand their organization, it's, they have about a thirty-million-dollar budget, which is significant, they have about five-hundred employees, and, you know, they certainly have a reputation in the community of doing a fantastic job, but I, I would probably be asking them questions that they may have not received in the past in terms of how they're spending the dollars. He, he was there, he's on that board also, so... Yeah, you can tell them what I said. Minus the jokes, you don't have to tell them the jokes I do.
Yeah, I, I think I would support that, that the majority of the... Um, yeah, I, I think I would support that, that the majority of the discussion was talking about budgetary items and I think it's a fresh view on our, our budget and how much money we spend on whatever topics. Uh, we've had the same administrator for a long time. We've had the same board members for a long time. I'm relatively new, but Ralph Safratini's been there, I think, forever. Um, and so getting a new perspective, I think, has been helpful on that finances because we, I think we have a tendency to look at it and say we have a healthy profit margin and, and we have a surplus that exceeds our target and we're happy with that. But I, I think we're getting into a bit of more laser focus on those budget items and I do appreciate that.
Okay.
I guess the, the point and to, to Mr. Moore's point, the, the minutes simply say LaPointe reviewed his position as county liaison and is interested in the pavilions and it took 20 minutes. You know, I guess if, if we're going to talk about what you said that took 20 minutes according to the timestamp, you know, maybe I should, I'd like to see the minutes reflect something besides the fact that you reviewed your position as county liaison. You know, there, there should have been some, some explanation of what you said in that, that period of time. And it, you know, and we all know what taking minutes is like, you know, and, and a lot of times, you know, we, we shorten them down as best we can, but, you know, if we're going to timestamp the minutes, uh, then we probably should elaborate a little bit about what happened in that 20 minutes besides the fact that you explained your position as liaison.
Robert's Rules of Orders don't, um, require you to put all the discussion. Just motions.
Minutes are records of actions taken, not things said.
So if you see what I put in there, it's pretty minimal about the commissioners discussed X, Y, Z. I don't go into he said, she said, because you could end up getting a lot of, um, you could, you could write them wrong and then people would be correcting your minutes all the time and.
Yeah. Okay. That's why we have the video. So I would encourage the pavilions to look into video.
These are not, these are not recorded though. I think that the point could be made that unlike ours, that anyone can go watch the video. Currently, at least, the DHHS meetings are not televised.
To me, as I've been at, there's one maybe person from the public, so. And we, we discussed that with them, so if they want to televise them, they can.
Right.
But look at the expense for whatever, whatever, so.
Yeah.
It is notable, we, this board has been contacted by members of the public that would like the pavilions board to televise or record, make a, a record.
What is the expense, if I can ask? You know, Gordy or John?
If we, if they were just to do an audio recording, it would be very minimal. I mean, just to.
I think they said it was $50 a meeting. He did a presentation at our last, at our last meeting. I think he said it was $50 if we need to have it televised and have a, uh, archive of the meeting as well. So it was reasonably priced. Um, and then we also discussed just doing it ourselves as well.
Sure. Everybody's got an iPhone now, right?
Right. Yeah. Could be that simple, really.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to receive the minutes of the Pavilion Health and Human Services Committee.
Support. Moved by Wheelock, supported by Klaus. Discussion.
Well, I had asked for that one to be pulled, but for a different reason, so I don't know how this works.
The minutes one?
Sorry. Yeah, the A2.
Okay. That was you?
So I, yes.
Oh, that's right. He said it in a public comment.
Somebody from the audience had asked, but I also have it for, for a different reason. So I'm not, I'm not sure when to bring that up now.
Well, this is discussion time, so.
Prior to approving it.
All right.
Now's the time.
Okay. Um, so I guess I, I just wanted to understand a little better from the DHHS minutes regarding the, the $8 million cash reserves. Um, I had a couple of questions and whether our representative, Commissioner LaPointe can speak to it, or since Mr. Rizzo happens to be here, maybe you can be the one to speak to it. I was just curious, do, is there a minimum fund balance required?
I did ask that question. I've asked questions on every fund balance, pretty much. Um, but again, it was the first meeting, I've only been there a short period of time, so I will look into that more. And, and we will discuss it. I'm going to meet with Cory later this, uh, well, this month to go over some of those things. And the response, as I recall, was there's some capital improvements they're looking at. We didn't go into any detail, so I certainly wasn't saying, going to say, I raised, I raised the point, it seemed rather high, and perhaps they could even use it to spend down their pension deficit, which is, although they're in much better shape than county, they're at 80%, they could spend it off. So, uh, we'll talk about that more as we go forward. And remember, I'm advisory only, I don't vote on anything.
Yeah, it was just for informational purposes. So, Mr. Rizzo, do you know if there is a minimum required fund balance?
There's not a minimum required by law.
Okay.
I think Cory, uh, issues for a 35 to 40%. Um, and the fund balance also is important because of the shifting funding since we're almost entirely Medicaid, Medicare funded.
Right.
Um, any reduction in funding could seriously hurt us. So Cory's been keeping it high, especially during the discussion about block granting Medicaid in the past years, um, that, that fund balance would be diminished very quickly.
You're not recorded unless you're speaking to the microphone, so.
Thank you.
Keeping you hopping today. Thank you.
So, yes, the, the fund balance, again, I think the target is 35 to 45% of our operating capital, which we are over. Uh, but we are over because of how sensitive we are to the funding mechanisms, since we're nearly 80% Medicaid residents and a smaller amount of Medicare residents. So any reduction in funding would seriously diminish that fund balance quickly. And, um, I think Cory, the administrator, was especially concerned about the block grant proposal that was a couple of years ago in Washington, um, because that would have drastically reduced our Medicaid funding.
So you need that kind of there to shore it up if that, if that were to happen?
Correct. Or give us a transition period to figure out how the budget is going to work during that reduction.
Okay. And then, so I only had one other piece and maybe you've answered it, but my question was whether could, some of that 8 million in the fund balance could go toward paying off, uh, the building authority bonds before 2030, which is the current projection? I was curious if that, even a, a portion.
I'm not sure, honestly. We, we haven't talked about paying off those bonds. Um, we haven't discussed it, so I'm not, I'm not sure if that could be allocated to that or not.
Is that something the board might be willing to reflect on and let us know?
Yeah, we'd be willing to reflect on, on just about anything. We're pretty responsive, so if, uh, if that's a request, we, we will take a look at it.
I would, I would request that you just consider that and let us know what, after looking at it, what you think.
Okay. I'll have Cory put that on our next meeting's agenda. And we'll talk about it.
Dean can probably speak to the bonding.
I, I don't believe we're at a call date. The, the bonds do have a provision for a call and I, I believe that's years in the future. We can, I think it's 20, 2025, but we can get back with you on that. So you can't currently do that.
Right. But whether any time between now and 2030 that could happen.
Down the road, based on the provisions of the bonds, you could call them on a call date if that was the desire of the DHS board.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have motion on floor to receive and file? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're on consent calendar, item B2, approvals, scrap tire grant, I believe, Dave Petro. Brief comment about your concern.
Hello again, Dave Petro, Interlock. I, uh, don't know if I, I guess I may have bottomed the wrong issue to bring up here. I just talked to Dave Schaefer during the break and I guess it's just, uh, a grant to take in, uh, old tires and stuff like that, which is, I'm fine with that. But I, yesterday's paper had something about, there was going to be some discussion on the PFAS problem where the tire fire was over in Blair. That's what I was kind of thought it might be about, which that concerns me. One of the things I, we want that cleaned up, of course, but, uh, one of the things that people are switching, or they want to switch from their own well water to city water, which is a great idea, hopefully if the city water is. But I have a historical perspective on that that might be something else that people should be asking or checking on. Um, I lived downstate in the, uh, up until about, yeah, 18 years ago, and the little town of Oxford, which is close to me, uh, had people, residents, uh, who had chemicals appearing in their well water. Uh, those were not PFOS at that time, because they probably weren't looking for them, but they were, uh, benzines and toluenes and things like that that were, you know, toxics. And they wanted to get off their well water and get on the Oxford Township system, which they had three big wells they put in there because there was a lot of development. So Blair's got one big well. And somebody, for some reason, checked one of the wells there and they found, oh, we're getting chemicals in there also. So they had to shut down. Then they checked another one and it was getting chemicals. So they had two out of the, uh, community wells that were bad.
Point of order.
So anyway.
Glad to chat with you after the meeting about it.
Okay, yeah, but I mean.
We got to stay on topic.
So again, the tire thing is good, but, uh.
Thanks, Dave.
Anyway, so thank you. There's other things to watch for.
Okay. So we have a suggested motion from staff to authorize the Resource Recovery Department Manager to sign the scrap tire cleanup grant agreement between Michigan Department of Environmental Quality and Grand Travers County for the purpose of conducting scrap, the tu- the scrap tire collections in 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Kofia?
Support.
Supported by Klaus?
Mr. Chairman, may I just redirect the focus then to say that this is an $8,000 grant by the MDEQ to take up to four semi-trailer loads of tires and recycle them?
Yep.
Thank you.
With no matching funds, as requested from Grand Travers County.
Wonderful. Okay. Uh, no further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item B5, medical services contract for jail inmates, item 47. Um, is that, Betsy, did you pull that one?
I did.
Okay. Did you have a question right off the bat or do we need a full presentation?
Is, is, well, so I guess my question, reading the, the different RFPs and the recommendation, I just had a question which may seem obvious, but, um, or, or somebody else knows better than me, but has there been any exploration of cost savings by, um, working with our health department, which does have public health nurses, et cetera, to keep some of the costs in-house?
Yeah, we do.
And I'm sure that you, you're the expert on this and I know Sonny sat on the jail ad hoc, so I recognize that I'm the new kid, but I would, just wanted to ask the question.
We do partner with them as much as we can with the, the areas that they can cover in the jail. Um, most specifically, last year, when we had the, uh, potential exposure to the hepatitis A, we went through the health department for the vaccinations for the inmate population or the at-risk population in the jail through the health department instead of going through contracted services, because it was much more expensive through the contracted services. So we do explore every option we can through the health department outside of the contract to save costs, but as far as the primary care provider, they're just, they're just not able to do that.
Okay. Do you want the full presentation or are we, are we clear?
Did Captain Ritter come specifically to make a full presentation?
He is, I think there's some packet information he could go over if we need further detail, uh, but we had a chance to review it. Commissioner Wheelock?
Uh, you know, I don't know that we necessarily need the full packet. Uh, the only thing I think I would note, uh, at least the way I understand it, one of the conditions that's changed in this contract from the previous contract is the fact that, as, as you all know, we added community, or we added mental health services in the jail. Uh, I believe there's a reduction in this contract to recognize that, or at least it didn't go up as much. Uh, the, the one concern that we've always had with this contract is the formulary. And I guess I, you know, it's probably something that Todd and I should have talked about ahead of time and I'd have had the answer, but I didn't. I know at our, at our last meeting that I met with him, they were still working on the formulary and primarily, uh, that formulary is, is the, is the medications that are approved by the health provider to, to be provided as part of the contract, not being billed separately. And we've been through it in the past where, you know, we have people in the jail that are being given specific medications and those are not included in the formulary and we pay huge amounts of money over and above the contract to include those medications. And probably the most common of those medications are cyber drugs. So I, I know that that was one of the key components of the discussion of the, of the new contract and I, and I would like to hear just at least briefly that we've addressed some of that.
Yeah, so, so the two things there. One, the psychiatric component for the psychiatrist is still, still in this. Uh, and then two, with the formulary, um, what we have done this time is reached out to Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. Uh, Dr. Kirk Cummings, who's the, um, medical director for Northern Lakes Community Mental Health, is reviewing the formulary and we are including his recommendations in the new formulary for the contract, um, to kind of help streamline some of those issues. The other issue we've identified in the past that was problematic for us was, um, the non-compliance, uh, term that they used for taking somebody off their prescription medication when they came in. We kind of cleaned that language up. We extended that, uh, worked with Northern Lakes Community of Mental Health to come up with something that I was more comfortable with, restarting somebody on a medication if they were non-compliant, self-medicating was something else, was something that I thought was a more reasonable timeframe than, than we had in our previous contract.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Chairman, I would move to approve the, uh, medical contract for the Grand Travers County Jail as provided.
Support.
Support by Jewett. Um, any further discussion or questions for staff? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hey, we made it through the consent calendar. All right. Uh, we are on item nine. Nine A, finance approval of Wheelock &amp; Sons welding and invoice. Take it away.
This is just bringing, uh, the invoice from Wheelock &amp; Sons back to you for approval as required for our purchasing policy and state, uh, law.
So, uh, this is a service that Wheelock's, uh, which is at least partially owned by Sonny Wheelock, Commissioner, has provided to the county and by state law. We have to have a special roll call vote on it and it has to be two, two-thirds, right? And he has to abstain, so.
And you had to have at least eight days' notice before we did the work, but obviously the material was provided a long time ago.
Lots of hoops to jump through to make sure we're not giving Sonny a special deal with tax money. All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Kofia?
Supported.
Supported by Jewett. Any discussion or questions about? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Jewett?
Yes.
Hundley?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Abstain.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, next item is nine C, Administration Board of Commission, uh, item number one, Community Development Block Grant, Housing Loan Program Income Administration Agreement. I understand staff has some information for us.
Yes. I'm not sure what page this is on in your packet, but the summary of request is a, a brief overview of, uh, information regarding our recommendation, but in the past, we received various block grants, uh, through the state of Michigan for home improvements, uh, for county residents, uh, and we currently have about 1.6 million in outstanding loans that we made for those improvements. And as we receive payments from those individuals or as they pay off, uh, their loans, we have monies coming back to us and that is what is called program income. Uh, we have, uh, certain things that we can do with that program income, one of which is to return those dollars to the state of Michigan, or we can retain those funds to be used here locally. This, the use of the program income, the payments that were coming back in, when we had a, a fully functioning, uh, planning and development department, we had someone who was familiar with the guidelines and that was able to do that. We no longer have the staff to do that as far as looking at income eligibility, el- can't, sorry, didn't pronounce that right, but we, we just don't have the, the expertise in-house to, uh, make sure that we're looking at those, uh, uses of the funds. But what we've done, uh, we are proposing that we work with the Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency to administer those program income, uh, funds. They have, uh, they're providing that service currently for, uh, Benzie, Emmett, and Wexford Counties, just to name a few of our neighbors. I do have, uh, two individuals from that agency here, Chris Brady and Leslie Castleman, that can, uh, speak more, uh, fully on how this would work. We have agreements in your packet if we do decide to move forward, but it would be our recommendation that we retain the funds here locally, but we would need to have someone, uh, that is knowledgeable of, uh, the request for those funds and how we would make sure that, you know, we're meeting all.
Funds going into this program? Does the state keep putting new money in?
No, we're, we're not currently.
Revolving loan fund?
It's like a revolving loan fund, and as, uh, we have a few individuals that are making small payments on, on their loans, but the largest source of the program income is when somebody, uh, either sells their house or refinances, there's, they have to repay the funds, but I do have, uh, Chris and Leslie, uh, Chris Brady on the left and Leslie Castleman on the right, and I'm sure you have questions, but you're going to be able to answer them better than I can.
If I could add as well, Dan Thorell from Environmental Health is here. Um, there is a potential to use these funds uh, to help solve the PFAS problem in, in Blair, um, and so he is here as well to, um, speak on that, too.
Okay. Do you have anything to present, or if you just go right to questions?
Willing to take questions?
Okay.
What kind of money do we have in there right now that, that is able to be used?
Well, it works on this, this grant, this, well, the, we work with the MEDC, runs on a July first to June thirtieth fiscal year. We have to report to them the funds that we have. We currently have about 80,000, which would have been, uh, funds that would have been, excuse me, I have a cold, funds that were earned in the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth of 2018. And I believe we have to use those funds by June thirtieth of this year, or we return them to the state of Michigan. And every year, we have to account, uh, so every year, the funds will vary based on what we actually receive from the, the homeowners.
Mr. Jewett?
The eighteen percent administrative fee, do we have, that's eighteen percent of what, I mean, do we have a dollar sign, dollar amount of it?
That, that amount is set by state, currently by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. That's part of their grant requirements. That will, for example, if we had a hundred thousand dollars of program income that we would use for home improvements, uh, we, you are able to claim eighteen percent for the administration of, you know, for receiving those requests, for going through the process of reviewing and making sure that, you know, the homeowners meet the, the requirements. That, we, we don't determine that, that's, that's an amount that's allowed by the current grant guidelines.
Based on the hard costs, so the cost of the actual project would be eighteen percent of that cost spent is go, is directed to administrative costs.
Okay. Mr. Wheelack?
As, as Dean indicated, you know, in the past, we've handled this a number of different ways. I can remember when all of these CBGG, the CBDG monies were directly given to the Traverse City Housing Commission. At, at that time, uh, pretty much all of the projects were within the city. And, and I was part of a movement that happened a few years back that said, you know, we have housing needs outside of the city of Traverse City that Grand Tewors County should be using those monies for. Uh, not to say that all of it had to come, be outside of the city, but then we went through a long period of time where the county land bank, with the help of, uh, the planning staff, reviewed all of these projects, and, and the application process is long, and then, and then the bidding process, and they have to go out and they have to do site reviews as far as lead or asbestos and all of those kind of things, and that has to indicate into the project. Uh, you know, I can remember sitting through land bank meetings where we looked at a dozen projects or more in a morning, trying to figure out which ones qualified and which ones didn't, and then, once they qualified, then we had to go out and get bids for them, and all of the incomes for the people had to be verified, and, and it, it's a very complicated process of how the, how it works. Some of those programs that we've been involved in, and I'm, I'm not, I'm having trouble remembering which ones were which, some of those problems, the people, if they, if they continued to live in that house for a certain period of time, that loan was forgiven. And, and, you know, so, so some of that money we may, may or may not ever receive back, but some of them were forgiven. But, but it is a great program. We, we had some very, very big success stories, you know, we, we did a project in the city of Traverse City along Eighth Street, uh, just east of here a little ways a few years ago, where, uh, money was, was given to people, but one of the key parts of that program was the, was the homeowner had to reside in the home. And, and that became an issue for some of the projects, and we, we found that many people that applied couldn't qualify because that wasn't their residence. They were using it as rental properties. So the, the administration of this stuff gets very, very complicated, but, but I think it's important to note, there are still a lot of people in Grand Tewors County that have need. And if we have the money available, uh, I don't want to send it back to the state, I want to get it to people that are in our community that have need.
Okay.
And so the, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. LePointe, you had your.
LePointe?
Um, and just reading the summary of the request that was put on there, it says, uh, we currently have approximately 1.6 million outstanding loans. Um, okay, that's money that, it's a loan, not a grant. We use the word in here, grant, and we talk about loans, which usually are conflicting, but anyway. So we have a million six that has been authorized, meeting the requirements of income and need, et cetera, et cetera. How much, how much, what kind of a balance do you have in terms of cash that you can, um, or we, I should be talking to you, uh, at this, at this, at this point. So what's our balance on hand to be?
We have, we, we account for this in a separate fund. It's not co-mingled with any other fund. The fund currently, at the end of, well, at the end of 2018, had 185,000.
Okay, so we have a fund balance of 185, and receivables of 1.6.
It has a cash balance of 185,000 and the 1.6 million dollars in, in loans that, you know, that's not liquid. They, I, I can't tell you when that will come in. Those are loans, though. Most of them are zero percent deferred, which means that there's no payment in, in some cases for 50 years, or if they sell their house, they have to pay off this loan. So, but we do have that, I mean, over the course of the year, we'll have two or three individuals that may come to us and say, we, you know, we're going to sell our house, but the, the reason there's 185,000, we're dealing with finite fiscal years that run from July one to June thirtieth. So we currently, right now, have 80,000 from a previous fiscal year that's available to use before June thirtieth of this year. The other 100,000 would have been funds that have been taken in from July first of 18 to now. And, and these, they're restricted funds. We, we can't use them for any other purpose. We can use them for, uh, home improvements, for individuals that are, uh, eligible based on program guidelines that are set by the state, MEDC, or we, we can return the funds to the state of Michigan.
So there's a, about a 1.6, another two, so about 1.8 million dollars of
Potentially.
Potentially, of money that'll be circulating, going out, coming back in, et cetera, et cetera. And you can collect up to eighteen percent of your cost in administering the ins and the outs and, and all of that. And that's, what, how big of an organization do you have?
So we're a 10-county community action agency. Our, our entire budget is around 20 million dollars a year, but we run the Head Start program, which is the lion's share of our budget across 10 counties. So that's about a fourteen and a half million dollar program that we run.
Okay, that's, that's
That's our whole agency.
Money that you're servicing.
Right.
I'm looking at the expense side.
For the housing and the rehab work that we do, uh, with administering the program income dollars, we're at about 300,000 dollars a year.
This is what it costs for you to administer the program?
No, that's total costs.
Total costs.
Right. The eighteen percent administration fee that we can draw on the hard costs that we spend, um, we typically end up subsidizing that with other grants that we receive.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Kofia?
So I, I guess, um, uh, I wanted to put faces to this again, because I used to work at the Community Action Agency with Head Start, and I have worked with eligibility and, and who the clients are who receive this sort of support. So often, we could be talking about somebody who is on a very fixed income, like a senior widow, um, and maybe the roof is leaking, right? Or their porch is in disrepair, and they maybe have paid off their house, but they can't afford those repairs. Am I painting the picture of the types of situations that would be coming to access a cou, maybe a couple thousand dollars of this to be able to stay in their home and have it stay in repair? Is that accurate?
Right. The state now requires that the program income dollars are only spent on what they call an emergency basis. We can't bring an entire house up to standard, but we can address emergencies, and sometimes roofs are 10,000 dollars, but they're the emergency, and other emergencies are wells, and they're 2,500 dollars or 3,500 dollars or whatever it might be, but, but yes, that's, and folks don't have lump sums to address their emergencies when they're on incomes that are less than eighty percent of the area median.
And you're not in a position to ever allow, um, somebody who's renting out a property for income to use these emergency funds for their property? This has to be a homeowner living in the home who needs the help now.
Yes, those are, those are the guidelines.
Okay. I mean, I'm certainly in support of keeping this money. I don't want to send it back up to Lansing. I want it to help the most vulnerable folks in, in especially, I mean, I agree with Sonny, countywide, um, that, that there's real need, so.
Well, the point is, we have 185,000 dollars, but we have 80,000 of it. If we don't spend by, by June,
Right.
we have to send it back.
Time is of the essence to get that money freed up.
More than the 80,000 dollars available if we find people that, that qualify. You know, the, the problem is, is how do we identify those people that qualify, and, and that whole application process is, is a quagmire to me.
But I bet you all have already some clients waiting for this.
We do that for many programs, so income eligibility and intake and screening and tracking of documents, and we do that face-to-face, not with, um, phone systems that don't answer phones. So, um,
Couple of questions.
As our professional expertise.
First of all, if, if this model back to the state, what would the state do with it?
Community development block grants.
If that was the case.
Community development block grants are no longer even available for application for municipalities any longer.
For homeowner rehab.
For, and for, directly for homeowner rehab. So the focus has changed statewide, so.
So these funds would be used for a different program, or?
Yeah, right now, the Michigan, um, MEDC is using, uh, unused program income to subsidize, um, multifamily developments in larger urban areas, because that is
So if we don't use it, it goes to Detroit?
Well, yeah.
Basically, I mean.
Somewhat, yes, yes.
All right. My other question is, um, in, uh, this is a, typically a county program that can be designated to another agency by contract. In designating that, do we have any liability in terms of there's malfeasance or mismanagement?
We, um, I'll, I'll give you a little of the, the history here. Um, these conversations started about a year ago. The original proposal that I reviewed when I was civil counsel was, was different than what you're getting today. So we, we spent a lot of time negotiating the terms and was able to shift the liability to, to NMSA for providing the service. The other, the other impetus to getting this, and I'm sorry, you just stepped out, but
Health emergency, huh?
He is here. Um, the other impetus to get this in front of you now versus waiting down the road is, is Dan Thorell came to administration and said, hey, we have this PFAS issue in, in, in Blair. We have people with wells that are affected that some of them may meet requirements to get these type of loans. Um, and so, so how, trying to help the situation there in Blair, to see if we can, to do something as the county with that also, also is somewhat driving the discussion.
Mr. Klaus?
With these funds, um, do they all have to be paid back at the end? Where I'm going is that Freedom Builders, uh, you're familiar with them, I'm sure. They do, um, great work in the county and surrounding counties. Is there any way that they can, um, utilize these funds for their, their mission, their work? Cause they don't, they don't, they don't charge the customer, they don't hand over an invoice, they, um, go there, get a job done for considerably less than any contractor would go in there for. So my question is, is there an opportunity there?
Sure. I mean, we partner with Freedom Builders. We have, over the years, on a few projects.
Partner as in like providing?
Partnered in others, matching or leveraging funding. We might use community development block grant or a housing preservation grant, and be, have a shortfall of funding in order to complete the project. Freedom Builders could step in and do a portion of that to, to assist with getting it actually accomplished.
The problem with, um, we, you couldn't hand the dollars over to Freedom Builders to give away just as grants, because the, the dollars have to be administered according to this community development block grant program income regs. So what we do when we partner with Freedom Builders is if they, and we've done this over the years, um, you know, skipped well for quite some time, um, is if they have a, a case and there's a homeowner that could take the dollars under the parameters that the CBPG dollars have to be given, then we will come in and, and income eligible, or determine them eligible for all, all the different reasons they have to be eligible, and then partner with them and provide some of the dollars, but they do have to be given, um, as liens, and you can explain if you want how much liens have to be, but.
Sure. As the program guidelines are written, any project over 2,500 dollars would be a loan to the client. So if we can find some matching funds to put in and say we need to do a septic system and it's 3,500, we can find another thousand dollars to match, we can provide a grant to the client, keep it at that 2,500 dollar mark. But anything over that, we like to offer it as a loan so that we have the potential of recapturing that money and keeping the program going, since there isn't really a future right now in community development block grant for homeowner rehab. And we do offer it as a zero percent interest loan, so the amount they borrow at the very beginning is what they'll owe. When there is a transfer of ownership, they pass away, at whatever point it is no longer their principal residence, then the loan would be payable back to the county. And it is a deferred loan as well, so there's no monthly payment, so there's no burden on the client to provide that extra 50 dollars a month, or whatever it is, on top of their already, you know, their mortgage or their medical bills, so.
So, um, and, and this is emergency, uh, that you're doing, so how does somebody in the middle of winter with any, uh, with a heating system that's failing, whether it's carbon monoxide getting in the house, or the furnace just quits, how do you, and with all of your paperwork that you have to do, how do you get that emergency taken care of with, uh, zero degree weather and all the paperwork?
I take those calls every day, unfortunately, and when it has been a Grand Tewors County client, I've had to defer out to other organizations, the State Emergency Relief Program, for instance, that Mr. Rizzo talked about earlier. Um, other, other, we haven't, just have not had the funds to be able to assist them in many cases. So, um, we try to expedite it as best we can. A lot of times, a client's already has a bid, um, say for the furnace replacement, and that's when they come to us and say, I don't have these kind of funds, what can I do? So we get the application out to them immediately, sometimes set up a special appointment to meet with them, go over the application, review it, make sure there's no missing documents, because it is an extensive application, and prove that they are the owner of the home, being clear, and explain how the process would work. And then we work directly with the contractor to expedite it as well, get a contract out, get it signed, get it in motion. So typically, we can get all that done within a week's time.
Okay.
But, Mr. Klaus, you do bring up a good point. Emergency has a connotation Emergency has a connotation of, we can respond and be out there tonight and fix your furnace, but as we know with federal funds, that never happens because there's all this stuff we have to do, but we do have a good way of getting it done.
Do you want to add to that? Dean?
If I could, since we have Dan here, I'd just like Dan to maybe comment. Dan has been working with both Chris and Leslie and Chris had mentioned the issue in Blair Township and he's here, I'd just like him to comment if he doesn't mind.
Sure, sure. Dan Thorell, Grand Tewors County Environmental Health Director. And I've been working with Leslie, started working with her back in fall. We had the PFAS situation arise in Blair Township due to the Carl's retread tire fire situation. And so that, that popped up over the summer and going into, into the fall. And basically, we're in a, in a much better situation with, with that area than a lot of other parts of the state are. Some people that have, there's 11 wells that we've identified that have PFAS in them. Most of the rest of the state, you know, they don't have the option of a municipal water system. It may be miles away. Well, here in Blair Township, in this particular neighborhood, we have municipal water lines right in front of the house. And these folks are on old antiquated, you know, 35, 40-year-old wells, the ones that are contaminated. We're just basically looking for a long-term solution. Right now, they have filters that we provided, that the state provided. It's okay, it's kind of a stopgap measure, but really, we're looking for a long-term solution. And that's why I started talking with Leslie about the situation and what could be done and identified this as a potential resource. If, you know, if it was approved, then we could potentially use these funds to help folks get hooked up to the municipal water system that are in need.
Commissioner Hundley?
That actually, I think, was the answer to my question. I just want to make sure that this would be, we're, we're freeing up funds or using funds to, toward the PFAS thing, which I, I think this is clever and great.
Okay.
Yeah. And obviously, I mean, it's got a lot of, a lot of things you have to meet, income requirements and ownership requirement. And it doesn't solve every problem, but it helps.
Right.
You know, it, it's helping, so. And then, you know, we're still searching for other ways too to help everybody, but, and, you know, connecting to the water system, it's four to $5,000 and you have to dig a five to six-foot trench, run two-inch copper line. I mean, it's expensive, so. And these folks, a lot of these folks just don't have the funds to do it.
Good solution. Okay, do you get a motion on the item?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to enter into an agreement with the Community Action Agency to administer CDBG funds on behalf of Grand Tewors County.
Second?
Moved by Wheelock, seconded by Caffey. Any discussion?
Just, one, one more. And it's, again, regarding Freedom Builders. So, can, can they access even like $300 of the funds? Because that's not funds that are going to have to be paid back. But, because I know they, they run on a very, they, they run on an extreme tight budget and.
Right. So, in, over the years and working with Skip, when he has a job that he needs $300, he typically doesn't want to put the customers through what it takes to become determined eligible for these dollars. It's, it's a process. But theoretically, that is, they could do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that's how it usually works on the ground. And I, no, I'm sorry, Dean.
Dean?
If I could ask the motion maker and whoever supported that to change their motion to include the attached resolution, the agreement and the program guidelines, so we have everything covered?
Well, I was looking at what page that was on, Dean.
Scroll, scroll, scroll.
Quite all right.
Because I got the, the portion about the, I've, I've got the portion about the certifying the officer designations and.
Page 87 and, you don't have to read it, Sunny, we all got it in our packet.
I'm, I'm fine with, with approving the resolution as it's drafted, I just wasn't finding it, what page it was on.
Maybe just say, approve the resolution drafted by staff as indicated in the packet.
Perfect.
Okay. Maker and the second is okay?
I'm fine with that, yes.
No objections? We have a friendly amendment to include that second part, put us in compliance. Still on discussion for this item? Any further discussion? Okay.
Can I add one, one thing before you vote? I just wanted to address the gentleman from Interlock and he brought up some, some good points. And the Blair Township water system is, it is provided by groundwater, so there's wells there. They have been tested for PFAS and they're non-detect.
Okay.
So, just wanted to throw that out there just in case the public had any questions about that. And also, just want to say thanks to Chris and Leslie and Dean for, for working on this. It's been a tremendous amount of work just to bring this kind of back out, so.
Good work. Good job, staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to take a five-minute break. Lines are closing.
Sounds good.
We are on agenda item nine, C2, Director of Equalization, page 107 in your packet. Your staff has some information for us.
Yes, thank you. When we were starting the interim position, Mr. Baker, our Equalization Director, and I had a conversation, as what I understand, he has had that conversation with prior administrations as well. Interestingly enough, Mr. Baker has contracted with the Board of Commissioners directly and that contract essentially allows the administrator to manage day-to-day operations of the Equalization Director. So, the contract isn't a greatly defined contract, it's not explicit on how certain management functions of Mr. Baker and his department would occur. So, we've been talking about that for about a year now. And when Ms. Kinsey was brought on, I asked Ms. Kinsey to provide me some information about where he falls in terms of his overall pay, relate or associate him with an existing classification, and we've been going through this process. So, what we would like to do is eliminate the contract with Mr. Baker. The state law mandates that the Board of Commissioners appoint an Equalization Director, but that law does not make that appointment be through contract. It can just be through an appointment. I've talked with Jim about this. Jim is okay with eliminating his contract and becoming a non-contract exempt employee. And in doing that and taking that motion or that move, I asked Ms. Kinsey to identify which classification would be most closely associated with his current wage and compensation and that would be the N4 classification. So he would essentially move into that classification as a non-contract exempt employee.
Okay. From a little bit of history, back in my first term as a commissioner in 2011, 2012, we lost our Equalization Director and we were looking at a pretty heavy search and it was, at least the way, the way I perceived it, we were kind of fortunate to find Mr. Baker at that time and he went into a contract where there was no, no steps for raises because it was just a set contract. So this will put him, bring him out of that and into a place where, like everyone else, you know, he gets regular raises to keep up with, you know, inflation and longevity increases.
That is our recommendation, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we follow the staff recommendation and move forward with canceling the contract for the Equalization Director with Grand Tewors County and have that position come under our staffing plan as a non-contract exempt position at a level of N4, correct?
Support? Motion by Wheelock, support by Jewett.
This piece of discussion, you know, one of the things that also has happened with this contract is, you know, because of factors outside of Mr. Baker's control, there's other duties and responsibilities that have gotten dumped onto him with no compensation for those. You know, the, the contract, the assessment contract in, in East Bay Township is administrated by his office, not, not truly an equalization function, but it is administered by his office. He hires and oversees those assessors that are there. A portion of the cost increase of this, you know, it's a, it's a pretty minimal increase that he's going to get anyway, a portion of that will also be reflected in the contract with East Bay Township. So, Grand Tewors County will not have to entirely, will not have to absorb 100%. The other big, probably the bigger piece of that is the fact that the decision was made a couple of years ago to eliminate the county GIS program and not to eliminate the program, to eliminate the department. And the duties and responsibilities of that department also fell on Mr. Baker. So, I, I certainly am supportive of this decision and I think we in Grand Tewors County are very fortunate to have him here. He's very, very well-qualified and he's a very down-to-earth person that anyone and everyone is able to talk to and, and he will explain it for even dumb guys like me to figure out.
Commissioner LaPointe?
I just have a question. He's going to become a non-contract exempt employee. Is that just like, what's between, do we have something that is a, is that different than an exempt employee, which most people are?
Yeah, a non-contract exempt employee is an employee that has a salary associated with what they do versus an hourly rate of pay.
So you're, the exempt means you're exempt from the overtime.
Are you guys non?
We are non-contract exempt employees.
Okay, so that's a classification for truly exempt, salaried, non-overtime, that's what that's called. Is the, so benefits stay the same? He's, he's been on the benefit program that you all have been on, so that benefits stay the same?
That's correct.
So the total increase in cost in. So, the total increase in cost in total minus what we get from East Bay, as was mentioned, is 3986. And we'll get some monies based upon how his, his pay is a portion to them.
Yes, this, this amount, this increase will be absorbed in the existing budget.
Okay, thank you.
We're talking about $4,000 total, and it, it cleans up our staffing plan is, is the biggest piece to me.
Mr. Jewitt.
Yeah, I'd just like to hear from Mr. Baker to see if this is something that he feels is acceptable to him or, you know, I'd just like to have his input on this before we actually vote.
Hi, Jim.
Hi. Jim Baker, Director of Equalization. And as Nate had mentioned, we, we hashed through this and I'm acceptable of this.
Okay.
Term and condition.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Ready to vote?
Sure. I'd like to echo what Commissioner Wheelock said in, in front of Mr. Baker. We have, I told him this personally, but he is a very talented Equalization Director. We have a very good relationship. He is a major player in what happens to us in the future in terms of assessing, recognizing what our taxable value is now and in the future. So, we rely on his input. We rely on equalization, and we have zero issues with the recommendations that he gives us, and that's a very comforting position to be in. If you don't have to second guess something that one of your directors says, it's a great position for us to be in, so.
He also recently stepped up to become a member of the Land Bank Authority, and as we've talked about before, one of the key components of the Land Bank Authority is taking property that is tax reverted back into the community. We needed to have someone that would help us evaluate that property to determine whether or not it was worth putting on the market or what we should do with it. And obviously, Jim has the expertise to do that for us.
All right, let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are on item 10, Old Business, Appointment of Ad-Hoc Committee for Code of Ethics. And this was our last study session a week ago today. We, we looked at some different ethics policies and like to take board action to create an ad hoc to look if we need to make some changes and what those changes might be to bring back to the board to consider.
I would like to request to be on that committee. I did quite a bit of work to research and suggested the study session, and I just came back from, literally last night. So, I'm a little bedraggled from the National Association of Counties Conference in DC and attended a session specifically on this. And I'm in contact with a, an expert from the University of Flint who's sending policy samples and is giving some guidance. So, I would like to respectfully request the opportunity to be on that ad hoc.
Anybody else have interest in the ethics?
How many are you looking for, three?
Typically, we do three, and there's nothing saying we have to, but it's just a good number because it's an odd number.
Right.
Commissioner Klaus, I, I really appreciated your comments last week about someone that does business regularly with the county. Would you be willing to sit on the ethics and?
Sure.
Need a, need a third wheel? I mean.
Well, I'd be willing if nobody else wants to.
I, I was just gonna say I'd be willing, but it's up to Gordy.
No, no. I second Mr. Jewitt being.
Okay. And I'm certainly interested, but I'm, I'm kind of leaving myself alone, yeah, because I'm, I'm the realities of time, so.
Klaus, and Jewitt, there we go.
There we go.
Can I, can I lobby to be the chair of this ad hoc? Since I brought it forward? And I have a very light set of committee assignments at the moment, so I would argue that I have some latitude that some of our more heavier burdened commissioners do not and would be able to set those up and run a good meeting.
When, when we meet for the first meeting, can we make that decision?
Typically, a committee would elect its own chair.
Okay, consider me campaigning for that position.
All right, so can we get a motion to that effect to make this a board action?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Commissioner Klaus Kaffie and Jewitt to an ad hoc committee in regard to the Code of Ethics on behalf of the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners.
Move by Wheelock.
Second.
Second by Pundley.
Second.
We'll get you on the minutes.
All right.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, we'll let.
Who calls the first meeting then? How does that work?
Mr. Klaus is the senior commissioner. Will call the first meeting. You guys can elect the chair from there and figure it out together. Okay, so next item is 10B, Appointment of Board Representative to Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. This is an appointment that historically has been a commissioner. And at our first meeting, we decided Betsy would do that. Betsy said she doesn't have the time to do that. Is that still the case?
So, because of the, because of the change to the 8:00 AM weekday meeting times for our regular Board of Commission meetings for all regular and study sessions, and the nature of the Community Mental Health Board is such that you travel to Houghton Lake, Grayling, and other places to participate, and it's two committee meetings. So, I did the math. It's about seven hours during a workday. I just was not able to do both our weekday morning, sometimes four-hour meetings, and the Community Mental Health regretfully. So, yes, that is still the case.
Okay. So, I spoke with Sharice Shively, if I'm saying that right. She works in, she's the Director of Community Corrections. And so, she actually gets to work with them quite a bit, and I thought that'd be a perfect position to represent our board, considering the history of issues we've had with corrections and mental health. She's agreed to do that, so I will appoint her by our board rules. That position is usually a commissioner, and in our first meeting, the board would approve that appointment. So, I would like to maintain that and take board action to approve that appointment if we get a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the appointment of Sharice Shively to the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Board on behalf of Grand Traverse County.
Support.
Okay, move by Wheelock, supported by Jewitt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Not sure how she gets that on her plate because she's got a lot there already.
She does. You know, it's, it's about a half a day a month, and I, I talked to her about it and.
A full day with travel.
Well, you could, they have a tele-meeting set up here in Traverse City. She can go there and meet from there if need be. Our next item is 11A, Appoint Ad-Hoc Committee to Interview Vacancies. We have a few, a handful of vacancies, such as the library. We have a couple of seats on the Northern Lakes Board. So, we need an ad hoc committee that will interview and do appointments for those and rec, or sorry, interview and recommend appointments to our full board. I would like to do that one myself. And then I asked Commissioner Wheelock if he'd be willing to sit on that because of his vast knowledge of the history of the county. He knows mostly what these boards do. And actually, Commissioner Jewitt expressed interest in that one at one point as well. Is it still the case?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we need to take board action to appoint an ad hoc committee to fill interviews and recommend, or I'm sorry, to interview to fill vacancies and recommend appointments. We have a motion to form that ad hoc, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Commissioners Henshaw, Jewitt, and Wheelock to form an ad hoc committee to interview candidates for appointments to vacancies on Grand Traverse County Boards.
Okay, you have a motion?
Support.
Second by Jewitt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're on to the main event. Item 11B, Additional Changes to Board Rules, page 109 in your packet. Let's go ahead and start with public comment. Do you have any presentation on this? Okay, okay, it was provided in the packet. Do we have any public comment on the changes to board rules? Please step up, separate up, say your name and where you're from. And we'll give you two minutes.
Hello, my name is Betsy Whacker. I live at 210 West 12th Street. I am brand new in Traverse City. I was a summer person, and given the opportunity to move here, I made a beeline for here as opposed to anywhere else in the country because I know what a great place this is. I have served on a town commission, a large one, back east, which is not where I'm from, but I lived a long time.
What's town?
We had representative town meetings, which is the old, the New England style. In the 30 years that I was part of, I'll volunteer in town government, I never once saw the representative town meeting or a chair of a commission ask to consolidate the kind of power, I'll use that word, that would result from changing these rules. I, I can only really go by the article that was in the paper, and I hope it was written up correctly. But saying things like "other counties do this too" is not always a best practice for what our community would choose to do for our chair on any commission. I think that creates an imbalance of, of control in a, in a commission or a committee or whatever it is. I'm concerned about that. There was a mention that, well, a majority could overrule someone, and a word was used, and I appreciated the sort of, a sense of levity, jerk, if someone was being a jerk. Well, all committees have people of political affiliations, and there are divisions in those political affiliations. And whoever has the majority can in fact override someone who is being inappropriate on a commission or in a committee. So, I don't see that as being a break on my concern. And I suppose the biggest question is, it has come to my attention since I moved here, that we now have a more balanced party. So, why the change now?
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment?
She's already spoke on it.
Yeah, if you've, if you've already spoken on, on this topic, our rules state you may speak once per meeting on the topic.
Mr. Chairman, point of information, for the people who did agree to wait essentially to speak on this topic and not use first public comment, which is three minutes, would it not be appropriate to give them, they didn't know that they were only going to get one or two minutes. So, is it appropriate to give them what they would have gotten if they had spoken first off? I, I didn't catch that, but now that I think about it, it seems like, I would, I would probably have spoken then if I were here from the audience, if I knew I was going to have less time.
Had you made it five minutes ago, I would agree. We've already started comments, and we're going to stick with two minutes.
Okay.
Any public comments on not this issue after this is?
At the, yeah, we have one more public comment at the end of the meeting, and you're welcome to speak then.
Not on this one.
Yep. This is only on the issue we're considering right now, which is a, a change to our board rules. Go ahead, Dave, say your name, where you're from again.
David Petrov, I'm from Interlochen. Previous lady here did an excellent job that the concentration of power at the top of, of any organization, any governmental organization is wrong, okay? That's one of the things I was leading to and things like that in my earlier comments. But you have this agenda here, this bit about, uh, agenda being subject to approval by the chairperson, it's like effectively giving the chairperson veto power ahead of anything, okay? Which is, we don't have veto, I don't believe, under our county government now. I don't think we should be getting it, writing it into here to allow it preemptive type veto and stuff like that. And a bit about people talking and stuff like that, you know, as determined by chairperson, that's another thing. What is acceptable, what, you know, things like that. Sometimes we have a lot of things, and I may be one of those people, bring up things that you don't want to hear about, but it's, it's our democratic right, and we want to support democracy, not reduce it. And the whole bit even in the, the time, as you mentioned here, this is unusually short. Gordy LaPointe was earlier brought up that the Health and Human Services meetings, if you look at the times, he was in public comment for 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, 20 minutes at the end of the meeting, and he commented on something else in the middle of the meeting. So, I don't know why we want to make sure that other people don't have any input, and I don't like that idea, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment on this issue? Say your name and where you're from.
Dave Nichols at 1044 Tart Trail Lane in Traverse City. I'm afraid that these proposed rule changes would be harmful to the county if the board members turn over substantial power to determine the business of the board to a single board member. This appears to be the case in the proposed rule change. It reduces the likelihood that issues of importance to the individual county districts will be fully aired because the, the chairman of the, of the board here will be, the chair of the board here will, does not, is only elected to, from his district. It creates a setting where the commissioner's involvement is suppressed. It is unfair that the board members willingly diminish their role in representing the people who elected them. I've heard one of the board members invoking the phrase that taxation without representation is wrong. Hopefully, he will remember this when he votes on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Remembered. Any other public comment? Go right ahead. Say your name and where you're from.
I am Abe Caldwell. I live at 327 West 14th Street. And with these rule changes, I am a delegate in the precinct 10 in Traverse City, and I'm essentially the voice for my neighborhood and whatnot. And moving up the chain to, like your guys' board, your job is to be the voice and listen to the voice of the public and your constituents and make sure their wants and needs are taken care of. I feel like these rules are attempting to stifle, one, the public's opinion, and it'll make the commissioner's job harder to bring forth their constituents' ideas and things that they want to the agenda because ultimately, one person can dictate what goes on the agenda and dictate who and, who can speak and when they can speak. I think this goes against the basic principle of all of your jobs to represent the public, and I guess that's all.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on the board rule changes?
Hello, I'm Alara Coleman. I live at West Long Lake Road, Traverse City. This is my first meeting that I've attended, sort of watched from afar otherwise. And I'm basically here because I'm concerned about this policy change. I think it gives an unchecked amount of power to the position of chairman while taking away the voice of other commissioners who were also voted by their districts to represent them. And I guess basically, I would just like to ask the commissioners who plan to vote yes on this to speak to their community about how this is going to improve our democratic process and how we're getting equal representation with this new policy. And I had some other things written, but pretty much getting the sense that everyone is echoing the same concerns. So, if you could speak to that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment on this topic? Seeing none, bring back to the board. So, we have in our packets some projected rule updates. Commissioner LaPointe, I'm going to let Gordy speak first because he brought this, and then we'll go from there. Go ahead, Gordy.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, and then we'll.
Go ahead, yeah, I prefer that, thank you.
And I did learn a lesson from, in a previous meeting, on how to, how to do this because there's multiple points to be made. So, move that we accept the changes to the rules of order as presented in the packet, and there, there'd be a division of the question in order to vote on each change individually. These changes don't, some of them are grouped together, and we'll vote on that, and then there's other changes that stand alone. So, that's the only way to really proceed through this, and Bonnie will know as we go through each point where we stand. So, I break it into five sections, five votes. Section five, 5.2 and 5.4 will be one vote because they pretty much lock in together. Then 6.2 will be a second vote, a discussion. Third will be 6.3.2.2. Fourth will be 6.3.2.3. And the last will be 6.3.2.6.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to handle this as a divided question. So, the way this will work, well, do we have a second?
Support.
Okay, supported by Klaus. Move by Gordy LaPointe, supported by Mr. Klaus. Move by Gordy LaPointe, supported by Mr. Klaus, that we approve these, we'll take a vote on each one, and before each vote, we will have discussion.
So we're not actually voting to approve them, we're just voting to divide the question?
This motion is not to approve, this motion is to divide the question at hand, and then we will go through each item as he listed them, and then take a vote on each part of 11.3, Gordy?
Help me with 11.3.
That's requiring two-thirds vote.
One second. Let me just pull it up.
Page 124.
Yeah. Would that go with the first group of changes, or would you put it as a sixth vote?
I can't get into my PDF, so I can scroll.
So it's final passage of measures, final passage of adoption of item after the board commission approves the proposed agenda?
Okay, just changing the...
Yeah, so what?
Proposed agenda, so that would go with number one.
Okay. So the first division will include 11.3, which is towards the end. Okay.
Okay, let me go back to...
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to divide this question into five sections, as listed. This motion on the floor does not approve the changes, it just prescribes the manner in which we will address the changes. Okay? Any discussion on the motion? Does everyone understand? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will start with, the first question is in your packet on, go back to the first page.
Well, it's page five in the rules.
Page, page five of the rules. Page...
114.
114 in the packet?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would, in regard to section five of the county board of commission rules, I would move that any county commissioner...
We have a motion on the floor is to approve the changes, so we're in discussion of that.
Okay, all right, then I'm going, my point of discussion is going to be that any county commissioner should be able to offer an item to the agenda for discussion at a future board meeting. And I don't believe that should be edited by anyone.
Okay.
Well...
So are you saying section five, the first paragraph?
Section five, first paragraph, the big thing is, it says, "and subject to the approval of the chairperson." I believe any county commissioner should be offered, should be allowed to offer an item to the agenda for a future board meeting.
Okay. Mr. Hundley?
I would echo Commissioner Wheelock's sentiments. A number of things here, and this is probably the largest of all of the five, I think, in my estimation. So my understanding is that past boards have had a variety of ways of dealing with agenda setting, and they're, in the most recent board...
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Point of order.
Yeah.
I believe Mr. Wheelock made an amendment.
I didn't hear him say, "I move to amend."
Well, I mean, that's the way we were...
I started to move for an amendment, and you told me we already had a motion on the floor.
We do, but you can move to amend that motion?
Okay, then therefore, if that's the way we're going to handle it, I'm going to move that we amend section five to state that any county commissioner can ask to have any item added to the agenda for an upcoming board meeting.
Okay.
And ask or just add it, because that's different, because that implies that we don't add it.
Have an, have any item added to the agenda for an upcoming board meeting.
With the appropriate amount of time, you know?
For the timing requirements, as in the rule.
Okay, so essentially, would you like to move is just strike the words "and subject to approval of the chairperson"? Is that what you're, does that encompass what you want to...
Well, that part comes out. I don't know that there's any reason to have the portion about items not included under the proposed agenda or proposed, you know? The idea that it is in fact a proposed agenda until it is adopted at the Board of Commissioners meeting, I understand that, and there's no problem with leaving that word "proposed" in there, but, you know, I have issues in my community that may not affect other commissioners, but they may affect the community as a whole, and therefore, any commissioner should have the ability to add an item to the Board of Commissioners' agenda.
Okay, so the main motion on the floor right now is to accept the changes as presented. You'd like to make a motion to...
I guess the amendment would be to strike that portion that says "and subject to the approval of the chairperson."
Okay.
Who made the first motion, though, before you amended it?
So Gordy made a motion.
Okay, because he was going to do five different ones, so...
He moved to, he moved to approve them and to handle, take five separate votes...
Okay.
On the pages that he specified. I can, do you want me to read them to you?
Got it.
Do you have them? Okay.
LaPointe, Klaus, 5.2, 5.4, 11.3 is what we're looking at right now.
That's what we're on right now.
And the amendment was by Wheelock to strike out "and subject to approval by the chairperson."
Okay.
Do we have a spoilt?
So...
Bryce supported.
Yeah, was supportive of that.
So I'm just trying to see how that's germane. The motion is to add the language, so why wouldn't you just vote no on the motion if you don't want the language?
Well...
Is there some of that language you want included? Is that what you're saying?
The key point was, is part of the discussion, is the fact that every commissioner should be able to add items to the agenda.
Right.
Yep.
Not subject to one person's veto.
So you would simply vote no on the changes, then? I'm trying to see how your amendment to the motion...
I think he was, sorry.
If somebody can help me understand this.
Point of order.
Can I ask for some clarification here real quick? Because I, I mean, the way it reads, it says here, "Any commissioner or department had elected official or chair of the board, authority or commission desiring to place a matter on the agenda shall notify the county administrator of such aim by 3:00 p.m. on Monday of the week preceding." I mean, is, we can, any commissioner, I guess I...
That's, that's fine, with the exception of the, what we've put in here is "and subject to the approval of the chairperson." And I want to strike that line that says "and subject to the thing." So if you wanted to vote on whether or not to approve it with that line in there, I can guarantee you all vote no. I'm not sure if that will be the majority or not.
Well, okay, well, I'm trying to deal with not so much the ideology, but the mechanics.
Okay, may I have a point of order?
Please.
Just, I spent more time than I thought I would ever on these rules. If I make a motion, I make the primary motion, and somebody, and there's a second, in the course of the discussion where we are now, and someone wants to make an amendment, which Commissioner Wheelock did, and it gets seconded, we then proceed with that motion. My motion is held aside, and we strictly go to...
Discuss the amendment.
His motion, and it gets debated and discussed, and there'll be a vote on it. And if the vote is yes, I guess that then goes forward. If it votes no, then we go back to the original motion that I made.
What I'm saying is, I'm questioning whether this motion is in order, because his motion is basically to do the opposite of what the motion on the floor is.
Which is?
Which is not in order. It's not an actual edit to the motion, it's just saying, "I don't want the motion," in which case you simply vote no.
There are, we were...
Commissioner Hundley, please enlighten us.
No, no, I'm not...
You see what I'm saying?
No, I do, I guess what I'm saying is Commissioner LaPointe went out of his way to say, "We're going to take these five changes," whatever, in this thing. Well, yeah, but within this section, there's more red than that one section. Now, I do take your point that that particular clause is the main effect of the entire, all of the others about proposed, and I think anybody, that seems fine, which is why I wanted to, I thought this was the point of discussion, and then we got sidetracked on whether we needed an amendment or what. This is, this is the key that we need to talk about, and not just slide it through, and so however people feel, if you're comfortable with me giving my comments about this generality, then I will take this moment to do that.
I, no, I...
Okay.
I, my recommendation, and based upon my understanding of the rules, there's amendment and phrase in whatever way it is, to counter mine, to expand upon it, whatever, that's a valid motion. Second, we have discussion and have a vote on that, and then revert back to mine, mine has become secondary to that one then.
All right, Sonny?
All right, if I may, I started this with just having the discussion that any commissioner should have the right to put any item on the agenda without it being subject to being edited. That was the start, and then you suggested an amendment, so I rephrased it as an amendment. I truly don't need an amendment to be voted on separately, I just need the discussion to be had, that every commissioner should have the ability by which to put an item on the agenda.
Okay. If that's just discussion, fine, we'll discuss it, and you don't need an amendment.
That, the amendment wasn't my idea.
Okay. Now...
Ruling the amendment irrelevant.
Now, typically when I'm...
Motion on the floor is whether to accept these changes or not, and we will now discuss whether or not they are beneficial.
And I think maybe we got it a little sideways, is typically when a person makes a motion, they speak first and explain the motion, and then you all can weigh in on, so let's do a reset and go back to that point. Okay, first of all, just make some general, general comments on this. There's been discussion about the chair's grab for power. I'd like to assure everybody on the board and otherwise, I put this together, and this wasn't recent, this is actually, I sent this, when I was first on the board in January, I sent an email to Kit asking some questions about these points, so these have been, in my mind, on the table for discussion, just to attempt to clarify and move these proceedings along in a better manner. And as, now, we'll take, the general term, the general concern that most people have is, I guess, the chair deciding what goes on the agenda, what does not go on the agenda. And as everybody knows, if a chair, you know, we as a board, a majority, if we want to put an item on the agenda, regardless of what the chair states, we have the power as a board, a majority, to put it on the agenda and vote on it. And I know a lot of people don't like the term "majority rules," but I guess we can go to a flip of a coin, that's the alternative, so that's the way it works. Now, the issue I guess I had with the existing rule was, it's the administrator that puts the agenda together, and we've given the administrator the power to determine what goes on the agenda. And the administrator can tell a person, "No, I'm not going to put that on the agenda," if a board member approaches them, or not. Or the other alternative is, everything that anybody wants to put on the agenda, regardless of how busy the agenda is or what's going on, you demand the administrator put it on the agenda, and since he's our employee, he's probably not, he's probably going to agree. So he's kind of, I don't know if he's the best gatekeeper because of the position he's in, or she's in, to determine what goes on the agenda. So I thought, what would be a more practical way to do it? And I think it's the way, when I talk to some of the commissioners who've worked here in the past, the way it typically worked was, the chair would sit down with the, after taking input from various people and their own observations, would sit down with the administrator, put together the agenda, and that's what was presented. That's my understanding of the way it worked in the past. And for years, we went on, and has not been, had not apparently been an issue. The other thing is, when I was thinking of how to do this, I was concerned, is this, or would we really be outliers if in fact we invoke the procedure whereby the chair, working in conjunction with the administrator, makes the call on what goes on the agenda as proposed? And despite what someone said, I did take the time and looked on a number of websites of various counties, not all of them put their rules of order on, but I did find three of them that did, and it's not that uncommon, and I quote here, Emmett County, now, these are not, I'm not fishing for counties around here, Emmett County, you know, quoting for the rules of order in terms of the agenda, "The chairperson of the board, in consultation with the administrator, will review and add or delete issues as he or she considers proper." At Seago County, the reason I contacted them is I talked to some of those, or didn't contact them, but looked at their website, I had talked to some of them when we were at the orientation meeting some time ago. It states, "The administrator, after reviewing pending business and consulting with the chairperson, will draft an agenda for the regularly scheduled meeting." Alpena County, "A draft agenda of the business for all regularly scheduled commission meetings, the chairperson of the board shall review and add or delete items as he slash she considers proper." Now, I agree that just because somebody else does it, doesn't mean we have to do it, but for those who might think that we'll be totally unique and we'll be an absolute outlier, that's not the case. These other counties function in that same, in that same manner. So the attempt here was to just streamline something. I think everyone's going in thinking the worst of the, of the chair that we duly elected in a democratic process is just going to run roughshod over the agenda and be in total violation of what the board as a whole, a majority wishes to do. We have safeguards in here that prevent that from happening. And I really would be, I don't know if insult is the right word, but everybody thinks, if anybody knows me, if they think I'll be just a yes man to a commissioner or anybody else, they're wrong, I'll make the right decisions. And I think, I don't see any issue, and it's a common thing, in townships, this is the other thing, most of my experience comes from as a trustee in a township, and they do a lot of work, maybe more important than this board does. And as you're well aware, one person, the supervisor, puts together those agendas. Now, it's a different position than a chair, but it's not that uncommon, so I'm proposing we proceed with giving the chair, trusting that the chair will do the right thing, I've got no reason to believe that the person won't, and as I said, all of us, whether you be in the minority party, majority party, you can assure that that individual will do the bidding of the entire board, so. And my take is, if it, if it doesn't work out, and we find out that that is, the chair is abusing this power, we certainly have the ability, a majority of us, to change the policy back once again. But I just think this is a more streamlined process, is probably more traditional than everybody on the board, set up appointments with the administrator in the course of the month to, "I want this item added, I want that item added," and what guidelines is he going to have other than say yes?
Okay. Kit, I just wanted to clarify, because the commissioner asked me this before the meeting, if these changes are all passed, and someone wants to add an agenda item at the meeting at the beginning when we approve the agenda, that just requires a simple majority, not a supermajority?
With these changes, yes.
So any four commissioners could add to the agenda?
Yes.
Other commissioners, Commissioner Hundley?
So, so many things. First, thank you for speaking to, I guess, the origins of this and that you've been working on it, because that does help speak to some of the perception that would otherwise arise, that this is coming up now, we've been here two months, so that anything I see and read must be a direct reaction to things that have happened in the last two months. And so then, well, what problems are we trying to solve, and do these solve, you know, it's a whole thing, so thank you for that. Um, I, and I would also say in my, um, discussion with, um, Administrator Alger, um, and, and also, I actually, the very last, uh, agenda setting meeting of the previous term, I did sit in on, they used to have agenda setting meetings and the, the administrator and, um, the chairwoman was, uh, were involved in the setting up of the agenda that became the packet and, and moved forward. So I, I know that there are, there have been different ways of, of creating the agendas in the past. And that said, I have two, I guess, thoughts. One is, in my, in my view of the whole way the system seems to be set up, um, we, as the commission, are essentially the legislative branch and, um, the administrator is the executive. And in, unlike the rest of the, the, the nation, we, 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 the legislative appoint the executive, but then we invest in him certain power. And, and in my mind, the setting of the agenda, we're invest, we're giving him that power and with the knowledge that we also are the ones who hire and fire the administrator and so he's presumably going to be quite open to trying, if at all possible, um, if this is a remotely reasonable request and if, and if they can fit it in, that he will make sure that all of the seven commissioners who are equal and they're representing their different districts, they'll all get a chance to have something on the agenda. So I, I just felt like the existing rules as they stood fit that model better, where he actually is the one with the authority. So to the extent that I would have suggested, I'm not doing it yet, this is discussion, I think, but I would have suggested an amendment that changed, uh, and subject to the approval of the chairperson to just replace it with, and in consultation with the chairperson. So that would still give some opportunity that we can all put in our things. You guys have the opportunity to get together and talk about how long the meeting is, can we shuffle these things to different meetings, to different, uh, dates? But that basically, as Commissioner Wheelock is proposing, all seven of us, if there's a matter that matters to my district, I can get it on the agenda. This second piece of that, and, and this is the thing that I've been really wrestling with, like, well, it, it boils down to, um, trust. And it's because we are new and because things go along the, the kind of, the, the lines that divide us, um, that I think there is, um, a, a possibly a jumping to conclusion about the other side's intent, right? And, but I, I wrote this down and not that it's, it's good, but it's, it's written, I wrote it down, so here, let me just say this. The whole, whole thing boils down to people not trusting each other's motives. Trust is funny, because while we're all better off working together and trusting each other, I'm, if I'm skeptical about whether you mean me harm, then laying down my arms is precisely when I'm the most vulnerable, right? So for me to go, okay, well, it'll be fine, I'm at the total risk of, well, I thought it would be fine and now I'm, I'm up the creek, okay? So, um, I'm going to vote, uh, for the policy that I think is the best language. And I expect to lose because I'm in the minority. But I am going to choose to trust that those on the other side of the debate are not trying to prevent me from adding agendas, adding items to the agenda and just that it's a two-way street. So I would ask that the majority, assuming there is a majority that's counter to mine, would ask that the majority trust that one I or other members of the board ask to put items on the agenda, that it's not out of some scheming political calculation or an attempt to score points, but that it, or drum up controversy, but it, trust that we're each proposing items that we sincerely believe are important to the county and need to be discussed. So let's try to trust one another and try to be worthy of others' trust and we'll be okay regardless. That's my say.
Um, this question be, I guess, for Nate. Nate, can you tell us, uh, just, I mean, we see it in writing, but can you tell us in words currently how you, how this, our agendas are put together? And then on top of that, can you tell us how this proposed language would change that if it would change that?
Well, currently this rule, if you read it, does not give the administrator any direction as to what will actually be on the agenda. It says, "Request can be made and it's left up to the administrator to determine what goes on the agenda." And what that can do is, uh, each individual commissioner could come and petition me to either, uh, put that on the agenda or not. So, uh, that's the practice of it. But what happens currently, as I think Mr. Hunley has said, we've always had some level of involvement by the board in setting the agenda. Uh, we had the agenda setting committee previously, that's my most recent experience. And I think, uh, other commissioners can explain their experience with the setting of the agenda as well, but that's my most recent experience. When we got rid of the agenda setting committee, I was in favor of a rule change indicating something, giving the administrator some direction that if approached by a commissioner or elected official, this is how you are to handle that. I don't think you want to have every single item hit the agenda that's being requested. Uh, the, the administration, the staff needs to have some level of control over the agenda because, uh, an agenda could come to us as a requested item and we need to do some research on that. We have to study it. We have to understand what the impact of that is. A simple example was today, the item from departmental, Department of Health and Human Services. We didn't vet that completely, because we didn't have the time to do it. But it, that is what we experience currently. We do have some level of consultation with Commissioner Henshaw prior to the setting of the agenda, just by a course of business. And I don't think that's unusual. I don't think it's new. But, um, for, for sake of clarity, I would like to see some change to rule number five. Either directing, this is how you are going to handle a commissioner appointment or a commissioner request specifically, quite honestly, and, uh, give staff some direction in that.
Can I, I have a question? Oh, I'm sorry, you had another piece to yours, right? Or did that answer it all?
Well, my second part of the question is actually for Kit, so, um.
Go ahead. Commissioner Jewitt?
I just, as I read by, uh, number five here, Kit, um, this does not exclude any commissioner from adding anything to the agenda, does it? And we, it says right there, "Any commissioner may, you know, add before 3:00, such I remember 3:00 on Monday, la da da."
What it says is that, that commissioner shall notify, so then, um, it can be considered by currently the administrator or if this change were passed, then the chairperson, um, would have to consider it.
And that's the hitch. It's a consideration. It doesn't say that I will put that item on the agenda. That obviously creates pressure that Mr. Hunley, uh, brought up, that you are essentially seven of my bosses. So there are, there are reasons to be concerned about that language.
But that is, that's current language.
This is current language.
Okay. Commissioner Kofi.
So, um, would it add clarity? I can appreciate Mr. Alger where you're coming from and looking for clarity. Would it serve the purpose of adding clarity to change the language in the paragraph? Any commissioner, we can make it maybe specifically commissioners, um, shall notify and the item shall be added? Because that takes it out of the realm of, of you as the administrator, making a judgment call about whether or not it gets added. You just have clear language that says it shall be added. We, each, the seven of us were each equally elected by our districts. The chairman was elected by a bare majority of the board and, and this is nothing personal to our current chair, I'm just saying the way this works, our constituents elected each of us to represent our district and we have that equal responsibility. So I'm asking you, Mr. Alger, would that provide you with clarity when you receive a request from a commissioner to say, okay, these rules say that it will go on the agenda?
That would make that rule very clear.
And would that be acceptable to, to your point, Mr. Lapointe?
Well, okay, you have to.
So that, so that each of us, if we tweaked the language of this.
Okay.
To take it out of the gray area for the administrator to kind of make a judgment call when one of his seven bosses says, I'd like this. If we add language in that just simply states county commissioners who, who submit an agenda item within the 10, before the 10-day deadline, it shall be added to the proposed agenda. That takes it out of Nate's sort of realm of having to make a judgment call, because each of us were elected to bring forward issues.
Okay, I'll give you a case. I, I flood him 10 days in advance and it's a demand, here's 15 items I want on the agenda on this date.
I think we would get in trouble with our voters if any one of us abused our sort of representative responsibility by, by sort of doing that. But that hasn't really been an issue. It's more like you're put in a position of making a judgment call and you need clarity to know what you do when a commissioner asks for something to be put on the agenda, yeah?
Well, as, just as a point of clarity, this rule change was not created by me.
Right, I understand, I just wanted to get clarity around.
Yeah, a problem was created with the elimination of the agenda setting committee or a procedure that we had previously engaged in, in the setting of the agenda. So we've already experienced, you know, an agenda request and then some back and forth with those agendas. Commissioner Lapointe, um, brought up some different concepts here in terms of who should be setting the agenda. I'm okay with setting the agenda, but I would prefer to have clarity as to what that, what this rule means specific to commissioners.
And I read the rule as meaning, as I think Mr. Jewitt sort of indicated, and forgive me if I'm misunderstanding you, that the way that any commissioner department had elected official or a chair of any board authority or commission desiring to place a matter on the agenda shall notify the county administrator of such item by 3:00 PM on Monday of the week preceding the meeting. And I took that to mean that each of us as duly elected commissioners could say, I would like something on the agenda, and you would add it to the proposed agenda, comes to the board, we decide. So I hear you that in practice, you're getting back and forth and perhaps even requests to remove things that have been requested to be added. And I can appreciate that that's a challenge. I'm looking for language that makes it no longer a judgment call for you. And I think Mr. Wheelock's language of stating, any commissioner requesting with the 10 days, it shall be added to the proposed. Then it comes to a full board meeting, the public has advanced notice that we are requesting to talk about something instead of having it added on the spot. And I guess the board majority could vote it down in public and say, no, we don't want to vote for this, but there's no veto power in the back room in that case. And so I would be more in favor of having it be explicit that commissioners can add an item to the agenda rather than giving one elected, uh, commissioner the ability to veto before it ever gets to a public anything.
Commissioner Wheelock.
Well, I guess I'd speak first to the agenda setting committee procedure that has been involved in the last couple of years, I guess. There were, there were two commissioners assigned to that committee, the, the board chairman and, and a, and a revolving system of commissioners. I know Ron said on it some, a couple of times, I said on it a number of times. In my particular case, rather than try to be here at 8:00 on Thursday morning to, to do the agenda, Chris would email it to me the night before and I would email back responses to, if there was anything that I had questions on about the, the agenda. I only, I can think of only a couple of times in the, in the couple of years that we've used that procedure, that I actually in fact was here physically in the building to approve the agenda, but I did absolutely review the proposed agendas prior to that as part of the committee. My, my concern about, you know, whether we call it veto power, whatever we have, is I, I'm going to roll the clock back two weeks. You know, we, we had a published proposed agenda that included an item about discussion of an ethics policy. When the agenda was proposed to, for approval, uh, that item was removed from the agenda. We had a three to three vote, that motion did not pass. I made a motion to approve the agenda including that item. We again had a three to three vote. That motion did not pass. I made a motion that we adjourn. In hindsight, I would have insisted that that motion be taken and not allowed for the discussion. An emotion for adjournment is not subject to debate. We in fact had discussion and had debate on the issue and we tried to come up with some sort of a compromise to allow us to continue to conduct the business of the county. But I, I truly believe it was short sighted. It gave us the benefit of being able to refund the bonds for the, for the wastewater treatment plant, which saves the city, it saved the community about $150,000, $180,000 over the course of the bonds. But the fact is, that decision to allow us to sit here and play games with the agenda is probably more harmful to this community than if we'd have just adjourned the meeting and went home. You know, what, what we've seen, you know, I've sat in this chair a long time and I have seen more political moves and personal agenda items brought forth in the last two months than I've seen in the 22 years I've sat here. It, it, it is downright disgusting as far as I'm concerned, what this board has done. And when we go out throughout the community, it's become a mockery. You know, starting from the invocation policy right on down the line. You know, I've sat through all kinds of controversial issues. Ron talked about animal control and having, having the room full of people. I have never seen so many negative comments to a board decision as I've seen on this invocation policy in my life. I spent 18 years on township board in Long Lake Township. I've been here for over 20 years and I have never seen the political personal agendas that I've seen in this room in the last two months.
All right, let's vote on the motion.
We each have the opportunity to give, according to Robert's rules, we each have 10 minutes and then another 10 minutes to discuss and I, I would like the opportunity to continue discussion of this. I have some additional thoughts.
I'm going to move that we call the question. We have a second. Support. Okay, there's no discussion. We will now vote whether we will end discussion and take a vote on the motion on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Hold on. So Henshaw made the move to call the question?
Yes.
Supported by Klaus? Hunley?
No.
Kofi?
No.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Okay, the new motion on the floor, the old motion as it were, uh, is to approve the changes, sections five, 5.2, 5.4, and 11.3. Roll call vote, please.
Wait, don't we get discussion?
No. We don't.
So, um, just for clarity.
Motion on the floor is the first part of Gordy's five-part division of the question.
Okay. So it's five, 5.2, 5.4, and 11.3 to pass all of those as presented?
Yes.
Thank you. Kofi?
No.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Hunley?
No.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, we have another motion on the floor, because the question was divided. Uh, this is rule 6.3, 0.2, 0.2.
I think it was 6.2 first, wasn't it?
6.2. Oh, I'm sorry. 6.2, uh, you're right, yeah, 6.2. The motion on the floor is to approve the, adding the language, board members shall speak on a motion, uh, shall not speak on a motion unless recognized by the chairperson. This is already part of Robert's rules, so it's just a clarification bringing forward from the volumes of Robert's rules into our actual board rules. Any discussion on this motion?
Just quickly, Commissioner Lapointe, have you felt that, uh, any of the, the other six of us have been guilty of this? Otherwise, why the red?
Okay, I, I guess this, let me, I'll give you the, the full honest answer, which I'm giving you on all these. But really, where I really noticed this being abused, not necessarily on this board to begin with, but township board, um, we did not adhere to that and it was just conversation versus a procedure. And the procedure says, and I agree with it, is you get recognized. So when I'm making a comment, someone else may have raised their hand already, sitting down there, they, they're next in line and then because there's something I said that was key to you, you just jump in. And, and it, we've. And, and we've done this on this board. Now, I don't think it's been in total excess, but it does get away from you. And the procedure, and this is, if you watch most parliamentary procedures, this is the way it is, it ensures that everybody gets an equal chance. I get recognized, I speak on the topic, and I don't get to speak again until everybody else has had an opportunity, so I can't dominate an issue. So I, I think it's, it's, it's much more efficient and it, it makes us much more aligned with parliamentary procedures, which we're trying to do.
Only other question is, is there any reason in council's mind that this puts the chairperson, other than facilitating and organizing, does it give them the authority to choose not to recognize somebody? I would assume that people would still be able to get their, they would get their chance, basically.
Do you still are permitted to speak once?
Right, okay. Fair enough, thank you.
Where in the rules does it say that?
Commissioner Wheelock?
I'm not, I'm not sure where it says that you only get to speak once and I'm prob, I'm probably as guilty of this as anybody, but, but I truly believe that when we are having discussion of items, that discussion requires not only discussion, but sometimes debate. And, and debate does not happen if, if you can't respond to the comments that are being made. To, to have to sit back in and wait for five other people to speak before you get a chance to respond to a comment that was made that may or may not be correct, accurate, or, you know, whatever. The, the fact is that debate on an issue cannot happen if you make a point and then someone responds to that report. You can't respond to that until six other people speak.
Commissioner Kofia?
Yeah, so I wanted to clarify with council, where in our rules does it say that we get one and only one?
I didn't say only one. It's actually the next sentence.
Yeah, read it.
It lets you to speak once before being allowed to speak a second time. So your question was whether somebody would only be allowed to speak zero times, or somebody could not see called out.
Someone else's question, not mine. I was just looking for clarity.
So no, I don't see a risk because of that sentence, that they shall be permitted to speak once before, at minimum, before the vote.
Okay. Commissioner LaPointe?
Yeah, I mean, it really goes, this may cause some confusion, this once. I get to speak once on a topic, on a subject, and until everybody else gets a chance to speak on that, I don't get a second time. I mean, which is, you just, you know, there's such a concern about somebody dominating a meeting, this gives us provisions that someone doesn't just dominate and jump in and count, you know, and just take it in a different direction. So it gives everyone equal, even those that aren't aggressive, and I know I'm probably as much as at fault in wanting to just jump in, but wait, wait my turn, give other people a chance to offer their opinion.
Okay.
And how does call the question work in, in that case, council? Can that preclude members from being able to speak either the first or a second time, including by the chair, calling the question as was done on the last?
I don't think the text is confusing. It says, all board members who wish to speak on a motion, so a motion that's on the floor, subject to debate, shall be permitted to speak once before any board member shall be allowed to speak a second time.
But I'm asking about calling the question, which is a...
Which you would be permitted to speak at least once on a motion that's on the floor.
A motion to call the question is not debatable.
Okay.
So three people, I'm sorry.
Is that right?
I'll have to get back.
Please do. I would like, I would like clarity on the calling the question, particularly by the chair, to stop additional discussion and even amendments from being offered, because that's a concern to me in today's proceedings.
Any more discussion on the motion on the floor to accept this addition on Agenda, or on 6.2, rights and duties of board members? Ready to vote? Gordy, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Roll call vote.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Yes.
Jewett?
Yes.
Hunley?
No.
Kofia?
No.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Okay, we're on 6.3.2.2. 6, 3, 2, 2. Permitted topics, persons may address the board on matters or issues which are relevant and germane to the county government.
Oh, jeez.
And the, the motion is to add the words as determined by the chair.
Okay.
Again, let me just clarify with council, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Kit. Without this addition, who would determine whether a comment was germane appropriate at this forum?
I apologize, you're looking at 6.3.2.2?
Yes.
This change actually doesn't affect our board rules, it makes it clear.
Okay.
But 6.5 says, quote, "The chairperson shall call to order any person who is, I mean, illuses, failing to be germane." So that puts the power already with the chair.
Gordy?
Okay, that was going to be my point. This isn't anything that is new, it's, this has been in the board rules for some length of time, but it just makes it clear who has the authority. It's buried down in 6.5, but just states at the beginning that the chair can call, makes a determination that something is germane. Now, so the public knows, any commissioner can challenge that. And if a majority feels that the commissioner made the wrong decision, they can override that and let the person continue. So that's, again, a guarantee that you don't have a, a chair or anybody who's making a call that cannot be questioned. So the board again, has the ability to challenge that question and put it to a vote.
Okay, any further discussion on this?
Yes, so...
Commissioner Kofia?
Yes, thank you. So in the, in the issue of who decides whether something is germane and necessary, I do have concerns. We had a situation with a former board chair who limited public comment in some way and the county was, was sued successfully, yes? And so I wonder if there's some safety in looking to more of a board, that it's a democratic vote of the board to say, you know what, this public comment is way off topic, it's about city taxes and we don't deal with city taxes here. So we agree as a board that we are going to have to end public comment rather than having it be, I think it's more, more liability for the chair actually to put that solely...
That's already in our rules, Betsy.
Say again.
It's already in our rules.
Rule 12.2 allows any member to appeal any decision of the chairperson.
I'm talking about, it's not that, I'm saying back it up and not have the chair make the decision, but rather leave it to the board as a majority to make the decision. This language is adding in language that I'm not comfortable with because I think it, again, is vesting more authority to the chair and I think it should be a vote of the board as a whole rather than just the chair, a decision.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but if you look at 6.5 disorderly conduct, it says, the chairperson shall call to order any person who's behaving in a disorderly manner, speaking or otherwise disrupting the proceedings, comma, by failing to be germane, comma. So it's, it's, it's already there, it's been there. This, what is being proposed merely just, it mirrors 6.5, so it mirrors an existing rule. Again, the attempt is just to add clarity. The Wheelock, the, I'm sorry, the lawsuit involving Commissioner Lemkul, which occurred in 14, was he acted in a way that was contrary to our rules. He said, I'm limiting public comment total of 15 minutes. That was contrary to what our written rules say.
Right.
So as long as you're following your rules, the, the odds are that you're not going to violate the Open Meetings Act.
And you should note that you violated the Open Meetings Act because there were people that wanted to speak that weren't given an opportunity to do so because of the 15 minutes.
Okay. Mr. Hunley?
Believe it or not, I can bend. I, I think in this one, because there is the release valve in 12, that if we need to override the chair, that that's okay, because I was wrestling with maybe having a board, but the chair is vested with trying to move the meeting along and I think that this is okay. I think.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we are now after noon and we have to have unanimous consent in order to continue.
We have to have consent to take up any new business. We have motions on the floor, they remain on the floor, we cannot take any new motions after the...
Okay, well, as soon as we're done with this, I think, I know I have to go and I, I do not, I'm not able to stay, so I, there's no unanimous consent to go past noon for me.
It is to take up matters, I was going, I was looking for the exact time. We have to stop the meetings.
Yeah, we can't take up, so Item 11C, amendments to the Perdian policy, we could not take that up without unanimous consent, however.
We've also broken up this motion into like six, so...
That's right. It is one matter, it has a divided question.
No, but it's been broken into six now, instead of one matter. So we're talking about taking separate votes and having debate on each separate topic and I am asking that we not continue with that until our next meeting.
We have motions on the floor and I rule that we will clear all motions and not take new matters up as our rules say. If you would like to challenge that, you may do so at this time.
I would like to challenge that because I literally have professional commitments that are starting very shortly here and so I'm not able to be here. I do challenge it and I would appeal to the...
Our rules don't bend to your commitments.
I understand that, but I appeal to the board to have respect for the...
You can't make it, you can't make it.
To have respect for the other commissioners who have professional commitments and not go past noon today.
So we'll take a roll call vote on whether my ruling is correct, that we will not take up new matters, but we will clear the current matters.
No.
LaPointe?
I'm sorry, information.
You need to state, shall the ruling of the chair be sustained? Meaning, yes, it was an appropriate ruling, or no, it was not?
The ruling being to continue voting on these various...
The ruling is that we continue until the matters on the floor are cleared.
All five of the matters are cleared.
Yes.
Okay. Hold on. Jewett?
Yes.
Hunley?
No.
Kofia?
No.
Klaus?
Yes.
Henshaw?
I don't vote.
Oh, it's a tie vote, so it's failed.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Support.
What motion is out of order?
No, it's not.
The challenge failed, right?
A tie ruling sustains the ruling of the chairman, so that means...
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Did I say it failed and...
Yes, you did.
Sorry, it, it passed then.
I understood that the motion failed.
The ruling of the chairman is to state that there is still business on the floor.
It's okay, I understand.
All right, I know we're all getting a little punchy, it's afternoon, but...
It's all right.
All right, so we have a, a motion on the floor for Rule 6.3.2.2, which adds the words as determined by the chair to the end of that sentence. Staff has told us this does not add any authority to the chair, it simply clarifies our rules. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, let's take a roll call vote.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Jewett?
Yes.
Hunley?
Yes.
Kofia? Oh, she's gone.
Absolutely.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Fourth part of that, fourth, there's only one more to go after this.
The fourth part of the divided question, it is Rule 6.3.2.3. 6323. All right, this is the addition of the language, allow an additional opportunity to speak if determined germane and necessary to discussion. My understanding of this is again, a clarification issue. Let me, let me just speak, the reason I added this was to ensure that if, you know, we have a rule like, that person can speak once on a subject. I think we had a good case in our second or third meeting when the discussion with the duck removal from Elk Lake or wherever it was, and there was an individual here that actually performed that function, was an expert in that, and we wanted that person to, we had several questions, we wanted that person to speak additional times. At the time of the meeting in which the person did, then other peoples of the public chose to jump up and say, well, if he spoke, then I get a chance to speak again on the subject. And it just, it just got out of control. So what I'm trying to do, again, is just add clarity so we don't trip over ourselves and say that at their discretion, they can allow additional comment, opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary, and I had the word in there to advance the discussion. But necessary to the discussion also would work, but, so it's, again, it's just clarification so everybody knows that their primary rule of you speak once on a topic during public comment is the rule which, by which we operate under unless the chair, again, determines that additional time would be well, well-used. Okay. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to accept that language adding to our board rules.
Legal thoughts on what we, what, what happens without that language? I mean, the, the point that he mentions is a good one, you got somebody...
I did not hear what you said.
The case that Commissioner LaPointe mentions is a good one, where there's an audience member who has specific information to the discussion at hand, so they, we would like them to give more information to me, which is outside of the otherwise the public comment. Without this language, what happens in that situ, or, you know?
The chairperson shall control...
I mean, are they not allowed to give the additional comment because they've spoken their three minutes and...
On the current language, the chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
What's your general?
But the sentence before that says excluded time needed to answer commissioners' questions. So if commissioners have questions of a person who's speaking, they, they, the rule as it stands already allows for those people to be given opportunity to respond.
Okay. Your question answered. We're ready to vote? Okay, so the motion is to add the clarification language at the end of 6.3.2.2. Roll call vote, please.
It's 6.3.2.3.
2.3. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Jewett?
Yes.
Hunley?
No.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Motion carries, we are on the last part of the divided question. It is Rule 6.3.2.6. 6326. And this one spans a couple of pages, Pages eight and nine in our board rules. However, the public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the board. Prior to the first comment, the chair will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. And that is mirrored in what I did this morning.
Right. The reason I put that in is I, in the past, have come to several meetings and it was never clear, it made public to make public comment. You always had the opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, at the end of the meeting. And there would be a topic I'm specifically interested in, that I'd, I'd prefer to speak just before that topic is discussed versus maybe two hours before they get to that topic. So it was never clear, you never knew when a topic came up whether public discussion or public comment would be allowed or not. So I'm just trying to put something in there that a person would know beforehand... that a person would know beforehand. You know, I can make my public comment here, or I can make my public comment there, and the chair will allow public comment. So, it's just asking the chair to disclose when during the agenda, public comment will be accepted. Now, if again, if the chair says, "I'll accept public comment." You can make your public comment on this item at the beginning, at the end, or here. We have rules in place that if he only selects topic A, that he'll allow it. If the board would like to allow public comment at a later point, they can raise a point and have, have that ruling, if you would, overridden. And the board can say, "Nope, I would like public comment allowed on that topic at another point." So, it's just an attempt to make everybody know clearly going in how the thing is going to be played out. So, that's the purpose of that. And, you know, it's something I experienced coming and speaking in public comment, and I think it would be of value to make it clear for everybody.
Question?
I guess to comment. Offtime members of the public do not know whether they are actually here to listen or whether they're here to speak on an issue until the issue is actually being discussed. During that discussion, they feel that they have information that may be beneficial to the board, and they would like to speak to that. If that item is not listed or identified when the agenda is, as I read this rule change, if it's not identified that we're going to take public comment during the discussion of that issue, those individuals do not get the opportunity to have input until after the board of commissioners has already voted on the issue, and it's a done deal. So, that's, that's why previously we've allowed public comment on items at the time that they were being discussed. Because offtime, you know, we have, we have people in the audience that don't come necessarily with the intention of speaking, but during the discussion of an, of an issue, they feel that they want to have input. If we don't give them the opportunity to have input when we're discussing it, and we take a vote, and then we get to the end of the meeting, and we allow for a second on public comment, and they have something that was, may have been germane to the discussion that we didn't know about. You know, I, I have one of my townships that takes, their two public comments, as far as I'm concerned, they're way too close together, and they discuss issues after, after their second public comment. And, and I think it's important that we give the public the opportunity to just comment on every issue that we're going to discuss if they choose to want to do that.
Kit, if passed, would this rule?
It's never been the.
preclude the chair from allowing public comment on items that were not specified at the beginning? Or could the chair, as just part of running the meeting, accept public comment on an item midstream? Like I did today for the airport commission. I didn't announce, but I saw that there was some interest in the public, and I thought it was beneficial to hear it?
As I read this, it says, "Prior to the first public comment, the chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted." That means you're not going to allow, unless you tell them before the first public comment, that means you're not going to have discussion or have public input during the discussion of the.
I don't see how it outlaws it. It says, at that point, this is what was intended, but I. Gordy, go ahead.
I hate to start a comment with, in all due respect.
Okay.
But I've sat in enough board meetings over the last eight years here, and I can assure you that public comment was not welcomed on every single action item. So, to say that that's the way it's been in the past is totally incorrect. So, I just want to, want to get that out there. What this does is, having been on that side over there, I welcome the opportunity to know when I would get an opportunity to speak. And, you know, that's, I would think that the chair, again, is going to try to do the right thing. And it would say, a topic that probably will garner public comment, he'll make that announcement at the beginning. If he, if he fails to do that, any one of us can say, "Here's an item. I'd like, Mr. Chair, I'd like you to add this." And if he, if he doesn't accept it, there can be a vote, and four people can insist that he does. So, I'm quite frankly, a little disappointed. Many of these things are just trying to add some clarity. Everyone seems to be jumping in thinking that we've got everybody with alternative motives. And it's, it's pretty, pretty disappointing. But that's, that's my point.
Kit, could you speak to my question?
Yes. At the, I believe it was the organizational meeting, we talked about changing this rule because the current language says that public comment will generally be received. And it was recognized that that is not a black and white standard, that it will generally be received. I can't speak to past practice, but my expectation based on this language is that it was generally received. Maybe not always, and certainly not never. If this proposed language were adopted, the language is far more black and white. The chairperson will indicate the topics. Now, the use of the word "the" topics is definite on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. So, if this language were adopted, there most definitely should not be a practice where public comment is accepted on topics that were not announced at the beginning.
Okay. Further discussion?
Kit, can you say that last one more time?
There certainly should not be a practice where public comment is accepted on topics that were not announced at the beginning. So, if a topic is not announced at the beginning and is one upon which public comment will be received, then it shouldn't be received later.
Commissioner Hunley?
So, it, it's clearer this way. By way of example for today, if DHHS issue hadn't been mentioned at the beginning, someone could talk at, at first public comment. Under, under these rules, they could talk at first public comment about the DHHS thing. If they failed to do it because they didn't know what was coming, and then it came up, and they wanted to say something, they would have to wait until after the issue was resolved at second public comment at the end, which is cleaner. It just has this issue of they might kind of miss their opportunity to say something. Whereas, the current stand, policy that we have, the chair has the opportunity to give them their, their time, but because it's at his discretion, it's, it's grayer and, and more controversial potentially.
Allowing more flexibility is wrong. But yeah, everything you said sounds correct.
Okay. Are we clear? Ready to vote? The motion is to accept the proposed language. Item 6.3.2.6. Roll call vote, please.
Hunley? Hunley?
Erring on the side of giving them their time to, to talk, I will say no. Not out of.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Dewitt?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes. Motion carries. We are past 12 o'clock, and per our board rules, we need unanimous consent to take up our last agenda item. I'm going to ask for that because our staff did take time to put that together, and it's a very quick edit to a policy. So, I move we take up this one last item before we take second public comment and adjourn, which is item 11C, amendments to the per diem policy, page 152.
Support.
If I do it.
Second.
Already got a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
I'm not sure it's critical that it happens today. I think we can discuss it at a later meeting.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Lapointe?
I think I make a point of order any time.
Sure.
We went past the four-hour limit. This is a different motion. Do we have to first have a motion?
The motion is going to fail because it has to be unanimous.
Oh, I thought we had to have a unanimous vote to.
Yeah, but I voted no.
My motion is that we take up this one last item that the staff has put together for us.
Got you, got you. Fair enough.
Guess we can't all agree, but we'll finish the vote just for matter of procedure.
Okay.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Dewitt?
Yes.
Hunley?
Yeah. Yes.
Henchel?
Motion fails. Okay. We will take.
Can I get a clarification? So, what was that motion?
The motion was to take up the last item, and it requires unanimous consent, being after 12 o'clock, per our board rules.
Okay.
Just a, just a point of question, Kit. Unanimous consent, in this case, does it include all members elected and serving? Or does it include all members present?
Can you tell me what board rule it is?
I don't know. You can get back to us about that because there is a difference.
It's, I'm pretty sure it's present. Let's go ahead and start second public comment while you look that up, and we'll give you your answer.
Unanimous consent of the members present.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody for second public comment? Step right up there. Thank you.
Betsy Whacker, 210 West 12th Street. This is the most amazing town. People are so friendly, and I'm probably pretty beat up after being on the East Coast for so long. And it's one of the things I love about this place. I've hardly met a single person who seemed negative. So, it is with disappointment that I share with you that there was a comment made today that was directed toward the people, or as Mr. Lapointe referred to it, this side, about our apparent indifference to the hardships of people during the DHHS discussion. I find that intemperate. I find that unwarranted, and I find that utterly unsupported by any information that's available.
I think you're referring to Commissioner Klaus's.
I am referring. I was about to say his name. This is the first time I've ever been in this room, so even if Mr. Klaus knew every single person over there and had had a personal discussion with them, he doesn't know how I feel about that. I, I think that reflects poorly on Mr. Klaus. I think that reflects poorly on the commission in general. People want to come to these meetings and feel that they're going to be heard and be respected. I just don't think that was a necessary comment. I don't see how that added to the discussion. It was sort of random. And I'd really like to see if people want to make comments that they don't imagine what other people think about public policy issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Chris Kramer, and I just have a question on something that you guys took action on earlier. The ad hoc committee for, of Rob, Sonny, and Brad to do the interviews and fill the vacancies, is that for current vacancies or is that for all vacancies that are ever? Is that a continuous thing?
That's for current vacancies.
Okay. That, that's all. Thank you.
Excuse me. Great afternoon. I'd like your honest attention. I'm currently, my name is Willard Bronson Killie IV. I live at, I sleep at night at the Safe Harbor Homeless Shelter. I've come in and got their application for a special land use permit and their operations plan. Within this plan, it states that they will stay open under emergency conditions. I've been thrown out of that shelter every day but three of this entire winter. And I guarantee it's been below 10 degrees and then minus wind chills. And it's deadly, and it's disgusting, and it's an attack on humanity, I feel. And then this, they posted on the February 24th. This is the blizzard that just came through. Deadly blizzard. And it states, this was posted after 11 o'clock, when everybody's already in bed. Says, "Go to the Central United Methodist Church to these hours till 11:30. Then I can go to the Traverse City District Library from the hours of 12 to 5." And then they open one hour early. So, the library, and I guarantee, I've already said, this has already been sent to the Board of Trustees for the library. I know they're not happy with the fact that they, this entity sends all their homeless people to the library to stay warm in deadly conditions. And it's deadly conditions even right now. Yet, and then, well, let me get to the next point here. Jace, you could talk to Jace at the Goodwill Inn. They're connected. They have these people that work from both entities. Jace will tell you that they get $126 per person, per day, at the Goodwill Inn, federal funds. This is apparently, the Safe Harbor's not federally funded. I did believe it was. However, that's three grand a month. You're trying to tell me you can't end homelessness? They're keeping the money. They're criminals. They're profiting from the homeless, and they exploit the homeless. The Goodwill Inn has been doing this for over 18 years, and they haven't solved the problem. There is no homelessness. Have you ever heard of a guy named Wayne Schmidt? He started his fortune in Grand Traverse County. He's the senator. You, you say there's no homeless? There's no places to put homeless? Ridiculous. So, I'll get back to the Safe Harbor. There, the females enter the men's wing. Females enter the men's bathroom unannounced. They're, that's a very dangerous slippery slope they're, they're, they're walking. They walk around and belittle the people. They, to fame my character. They refer to us as "them." They like to go do this. No, I'm a guest. I'm trying to be helped out of this. There is no help at all. They throw us out. Ryan Hanon comes walking through the men's wing. It says, posted right on there, "No food or drink allowed." He'll be eating chili in there and berating people, threatening them to exit them. I was exited for asking to pray in the chapel. There is a chapel in the Safe Harbor, and it's been closed every day for two years they've been open. I asked to pray in it, and I was thrown out for seven days[1576.74]